So really, I'm gonna go ahead and start, okay? Thank you. Good evening. It is Tuesday, June 8th, and this is the Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting. It is 6:33 PM. And councilors present this evening are Granatowski, Bordelon, Bumgardner, Franco, Heed, and Obree. Counselor Zepary notified that he can't be with us this evening. And councilors that are absent are Melendez and Parker, and they will probably be joining us shortly, I would assume. So we have a quorum with six councilors. And calendar communications, Councilor Bumgardner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I attended a Bakersfield Watershed Committee meeting on the second. We heard a great presentation from our moderator, Sima Eben, who also functions, or sorry, works for Connecticut Seagrant on a fertilizer usage study they had done with, she had done in conjunction with her students, and it was very informative, learning about the work she does in ensuring that, you know, our beautiful land and our waterways are protected for the years to come. So really enjoy the presentation and the work that committee's doing, and nothing further to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Franco.
I just had communications by email and spoke with some residents about issues that are in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Heed.
I'll just piggyback off Counselor Franco. I heard, I received emails and had phone conversations with residents in town. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Obree.
Yes, I can't believe the week's already gone by from last Tuesday. I do have a communication. Would you want me to read it here later in the meeting? It's from a citizen.
Well, this is communication, so now would be the appropriate time.
Okay, if you will allow me, I am writing regarding my civil complaint identifying several alleged Town Council rule violation by a member of your body. I initially stated my grievance during the public comments on the April 8th, 2021 TC regular meeting. In the spirit of transparency, I would respectfully request that you and the members of the Rules Committee and/or council decide in public vote for the record whether or not the allegations to which I provided supporting documentation violated any existing Town Council rules. I would like to thank you and Counselor Parker for allowing me to attend the Town Council Rule and Procedures meeting on April 29th, 2021, and participate in the public discourse of this issue. As I have stated then and will still affirm now, the intent of my complaint was to address Town Council Rules violations 14, 10A, and E, to have a public inquiry and have council debate and vote whether the allegations are substantial or not for the official record. After recently reviewing the posted YouTube video, it appears that the conclusion of this meeting, both members who attended this committee were in consensus that violations did occur. Also, it shall be noted, the counselor in question chose not to attend this meeting, which they are also the third member of, to give their side of accounts to the citizens' concern in the spirit of open transparency. Since that meeting, there was lengthy deliberation at a recent Town Council COW discussing ways forward, including response from a few councilors stating that this complaint was political in nature due to city election. That many councilors have violated rules, that many councilors have violated rules and not got in trouble, or there were no remedies to discipline violators of Town Council rules. Let me be clear, if any counselor feels another one clearly violated rule, then be empowered, call it out, and follow the established process. The rules you all approved are there for a reason and not just window dressing. Most importantly, Groton citizens have the right and the duty to hold their elected officials to account and make sure they abide by the rules they swore oath to uphold. This is exactly why I have, what have, this is exactly what I have done by lodging the complaint I brought forward over two months ago. The COW discussion resulted in this referral item being brought back to your committee, and there has been one scheduled meeting that was recently canceled. If the members of the committee are unable or unwilling to swiftly do the people's business, perhaps this referral item is more suitable for the larger Town Council body to deliberate if rules were violated or not. Then another separate referral can be made to inquire about next disciplinary steps. I would like to respectfully request that the April 27th, 21 Town Council TCR and P referral item 2021-319 be submitted as an agenda item for discussion at the next available Town Council COW or Town Council regular meeting, whichever one is appropriate procedure. Thank you for your consideration sincerely, Jean Claude Ambrose. I wanted to share that with you, and I will, if it's appropriate, later in our meeting, ask for this to be submitted for the next available meeting to be discussed by the council.
Do you have other communications, Counselor Obree?
No, that's enough.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that Counselor Parker arrived at 6:36, so we are at seven councilors right now. Thank you. Welcome, Counselor Parker. We are just on communications. We will circle back to you in a moment, and we are at Counselor Bordelon, please.
Thank you. I attended the Board of, part of the Board of Ed meeting yesterday. Attended some different events at the high school, the track state meet on Wednesday, attended the athletic award scholarships. Counselor Franco's son was recognized there, as well as my son and many other wonderful recipients. So congrats to all the senior athletic athletes that were recognized at that award ceremony. What else? I think that's all I have. Just some communications from folks in the community. Received that message from Ressler that John forwarded us stating the concerns with John Goodrich at the property. Should we read that into the record?
No, it's not necessary. Thank you. It is part of the public record, but it's not necessary to be read.
Well, there's other communications. Should we, I mean, I'm just asking, is every communication we get, we should be reading into the record? I just wanna-
We've had consultation with our attorney and with the gentleman at Freedom of Information Commission, and he has already clarified that for us. Thank you.
No, I'm asking, I have other communications, like Counselor Obree read, so should we read them all? Or do we just re-pick one that we read, or how does that work?
So, as I said, Counselor Bordelon, it is not necessary to read our communications into the record because they are all part of the public record. As such, if you choose to read a communication into the record, that is certainly your prerogative. However, be mindful of everyone else's time to communicate as well.
That's fine. I won't read any tonight, so can you just attach all those emails to the agenda at the end, then?
They're all part of public record already. Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Counselor Parker, did you have communications?
Uh, no, I just have, no, I do not. Oh, could I respond to Counsel Obree's reading of Mr. Ambrose's letter?
We are going to, she's asked to raise that again later in the meeting, so I'm assuming that will come under other business, so at that point, we can discuss. If you have something that you wish to communicate right now.
Oh, I do.
Yes.
So on the meeting that was scheduled for May 27th, 2021, as this is my personal business, I'm actually gonna put it out there. I had surgery that day, so I was unable to have that meeting that day. There are several meetings that I also attend and work obligations I have to do. So I was going to email Counsel Obree when I have a free moment to look at my schedule and discuss that, as well as checking with Counsel Bumgardner, as he's also part of that committee. It is not that I am avoiding the issue, so I'm stating this for public record, but I have medical issue that I had to take care of. And I, the fact that I have to announce this in front of everyone on TV is very disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. As did all the rest of the Town Council, I received several communications regarding a variety of issues, including Mystic Education Center, the recent incident at a local business, the criminal incident at a local business. I attended the Board of Ed Town Council RTM City Joint Meeting, and Superintendent Austin reported out good news on camps that they're having over the summer. They're gonna be having three camps. And they're looking to accommodate at least 350 kids at the elementary level. They're working with Parks and Rec to see what kind of overlap they can have for meeting the needs of the children in the community. One of the nice things is that there's gonna be embedded coaching for the teachers at one of the camps. So there'll be a professional brought in to run the camp, but then our district's teachers will be there as well, and they'll be learning from the coach that comes in so that they can then carry forward with the ideas that were brought in for the, for the children's camp. As you probably know, there was some information on transportation changes. There was an audit to look for efficiencies, and the result of that was this two-tier system that you've probably read about, and especially if you're a parent, you're aware of. I've heard some friends discussing this issue, where there will be a high school, middle school system, and then an elementary run later. They were gonna be looking at that and then reporting back to the superintendent's office to examine how it's going and any, to address any issues. Let's see. There's also gonna be a STEAM experience called Blues and Beyond, dealing with African-American history. And, Mr. Burt, I have a question that perhaps you can answer under your communications. Superintendent Austin was concerned with two ships that are due to be assigned to the base, the Cheyenne in California, I believe. And she was wondering if we had information on the number of students that might be coming into the district as a result of those two ships. So if you have that information, if not, if you could relay that at some point to Superintendent Austin, that would be great. Thank you very much. Mr. Burt, do you have communications?
I do not.
Thank you. All right, so we are on to approval of minutes. And this is for item 4A, 2021-4040, May 25th minutes and June 1st special meeting minutes. And this is Counselor Bumgardner.
I'm making a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of May 25th, 2021, and committee of the whole special meeting minutes of June 1st, 2021, so move.
Second, Bordelon.
By Bumgardner and seconded by Bordelon for approval of the minutes. And I'm sorry, I didn't announce, it started on page two in your packet, if you needed to follow along and address any issues. Do any councilors have comments or concerns regarding the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on approval of the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven councilors. And we are on to new business, item 5A, 2021-437, Children First Groton Collaborative Grant. This is on page 13 in your packet, and I believe we are on Counselor Parker, please.
Just a long moment, trying to get to the right page, thank you.
Thank you.
Little steps. Make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing, nope, wrong one, no, that's correct. Authorizing the Superintendent of Schools, Susan Austin, to execute the contract agreement between the Connecticut Council for Athleticing as a fiscal sponsor for the Connecticut Early Childhood Funders Collaboratives and the Groton Public Schools as a fiscal sponsor for the Children First Groton/School Readings Council Collaborative, and to receive the grant funding in the amount of $35,000, I so move.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Obree. Thank you very much. And with us this evening, we have Linda Allen. And Ms. Allen, did you wish to give any kind of overview for this grant before? Hi, how are you? You're muted.
Hi, thank you for inviting me. I just am very excited. This was a continuation grant of one that we had gotten last year, and due to the pandemic, we were impacted with some of the, we were still able to carry out a lot of what we wanted to do in the beginning, but really had to shift gears, as everyone did, due to the pandemic. So we're excited. A big focus of this grant is to really amplify the voices of families, and there's going to be a concerted effort to, there's, on a state level, there will be a parent ambassador cabinet that, we have two parents, two members of Groton who will be a part of that, and we're trying to really strengthen and revitalize and, and support the neighborhood groups. And really looking forward to deepening the involvement in the diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts in Groton, along with collaborating and partnering with a lot of agencies to, to support young children and families.
Thank you very much, and our Counselor Melendez is a member of your coalition, and I'm sure he would be happy because he is also a member of the DEI Committee, so I'm sure that pleases him. Thank you. Pleases all of us, I'm sure. Counselor Parker, did you have remarks on this item, please?
Just a question, procedural question for the town manager, please.
Yes.
Does this have to go to the RTM because of the dollar amount?
It does. Yes, the Board of Ed will approve it, as well as the RTM will need to approve it.
Okay, so it would go from us to the Board of Ed, then back to the RTM?
No, ours and the Board of Ed's are simultaneous. It'll go from us just to the RTM.
Because I didn't say that in the referral, in the motion. That's why I wanted to ask.
I think it'll be okay, as long as it's in the council meeting, when we do the motion, council.
Correct.
Thank you. Just confirming.
Just for a practical purpose, if something's required to go to the RTM, it goes, whether it's in the referral or not?
And I just wanted to note that Counselor Melendez arrived at 6:51. Welcome, Counselor Melendez. We are now at eight councilors, and Counselor Melendez, just to bring you up to speed, we are on item 2021-437, Children First Groton Collaborative Grant. And the motion was made by Parker and seconded by Obree, and Ms. Allen just spoke to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments, or Counselor Melendez, did you wish to speak to this, since you were part of this organization, or are you all set, sir?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, we will vote on 2021-437, Children First Groton Collaborative Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight councilors. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a nice evening.
Thanks. All right, so we are on to item 5B, which is 2021-881, Mystic Education Center Redevelopment Process Overview. And the materials for this began on page 28 in your packet. I think there might have just been that one. Let me just get there. Yeah, there's just the one page. And with us this evening, we have Mr. Reiner and Mr. Bronk. Both are here this evening. Thank you. Ms. Jones is in a planning and zoning meeting, I understand. So what, I will turn it over to Mr. Burt first, and then, Mr. Burt, you can turn it over to your team.
Mr. Reiner and Mr. Bronk are here to give kind of a overview of the process for the Mystic Education Center project, both the past and upcoming steps. And there are a series of, along the way, they're gonna ask the council whether you're interested in particular sections, so that they don't waste your time. So as we go, they'll be seeking your input, whether you want another section of presentation, so.
I'm sorry, could you?
That's a little confusing.
Yeah.
There's a lot to, there's a lot of possibilities to this presentation. Their plan is, they'll do the things that they know the council are interested in. And as they get to further sections, they will ask, are you interested in hearing about X? And then you will say whether you want to hear about that, and they'll have a series of those to see if you are interested in.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, Mr. Reiner, are you leading, or Mr. Bronk?
John Reiner, Director of Planning Development Services. I'll take the lead on this, and my colleague will jump in as necessary. So first of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. So, you know, as Mr. Burt said, we could talk about this topic probably for a few hours, if we needed to, but we don't wanna take that level of time. We'll take whatever time the council wants us to go through tonight. But we kinda wanted to gauge the direction of topics for what the council is most interested in. So we wanted to talk a little bit about the process of how we've gotten here and where we'll be going, some of those general next steps, a little bit of the history, the RFP process, the Planning and Zoning Commission process, and really where this application, actually, no, there is no application, where this redevelopment project may go, could go, or will go. So that's kind of the, the general framework we wanted to cover. So, you know, again, as a very brief overview, this-
One second, please. I'm sorry. I would just ask that, we're cognizant that there is probably quite a large audience listening this evening, and so if we can talk in terms that the general public will understand, and that will be helpful to them as well as to us. Thank you.
Yes, yeah. I will do my best not to use any planning or economic development jargon, and if I do, please raise your hand and stop me, and I'll try to clarify or page well. So one item that we really can't stress enough with this project is this is a redevelopment project that is still very much conceptual at this stand, at this point in time. There is no formal plan. It is a concept plan. And there is, again, with there being no application, that means that currently there is nothing to deny, and there is nothing to approve. So I think that's one of the most important things to talk about right now, in just putting that point out there again. Now, we will talk a little bit about the Planning and Zoning Commission process and where we currently are. Just to put it on people's radar, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting in a workshop session on June 14th to start looking at setting the right direction for the zoning. We are not presenting any new zoning text to them, and we're not really gonna be getting into specific zoning text language. We wanna take a big step back and discuss with them the concept for the property, for the site, and how we can move something forward for redevelopment options. Because the Planning and Zoning Commission is very much in the driver's seat for this project. Without the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval, there is no new zoning text, there is no new zoning changes or map amendments or master plan approvals. So without them formally adopting or denying, the project doesn't move forward. So I think that's a really important point that we have to make and that people have to understand. That, again, there is no application, nothing to approve right now, and nothing to deny. We can talk a little bit about the history of the property, so, you know, if that's something, kinda, a little bit of how we've gotten here, is that something that interests the council, if we can cover that briefly?
I'm seeing nodding of, have heads, so yes.
Okay, all right, great. And I know Paige will jump in with me on this if need be. So, you know, historically, the property's been vacant for over a decade. I know I've said this before, I've found Town Council minutes from the late 1970s discussing, what is the town gonna do about the redevelopment of the Mystic Education Center property? So it's something that's been out there for a long time. The, it is a state-owned property. It's not a town-owned property. And the state and the town together tried to get into a redevelopment process. Some of what kicked this off was not only the town, as part of our market analysis, VHB did an analysis of the property, looking at what some future uses could be. And we also applied for a State Brownfields grant, which we received about $50,000 from the state to do marketing for the property and to start on some new zoning for the property, and getting that whole process kicked off. As part of that process, the town did some outreach. We also, to the community, we had held a public meeting to get some input about uses on the property, but also to alert people that this is going to be a redevelopment effort. We also marketed the property prior to developing the RFP with the state assisting us and helping us, because, again, it's a state property. We put that RFP process out there and started moving that forward. At the same time that was happening, the state was actually doing some demolition and remediation on the site, on the property. Oh, I see a hand waving.
Can you tell people what an RFP is?
Sure, yes. An RFP, thank you very much, is a request for proposals. So it is not a bid where someone is bidding a certain price for something, but instead, it was, and Paige could definitely describe the process a little bit better and what we were looking for, but we put together a request for proposals, looking for interest from developers that could redevelop the property. And as part of that, we invited them to put forward concepts for the redevelopment. We did identify the buildings, such as the Mystic Oral School Building, as well as the Pratt Building, that we would like to see preserved as part of that redevelopment effort. Paige, anything you wanna add on that RF, the request for proposals, the, the process, or anything that I've covered thus far?
Sure, just, just briefly. I actually have a copy of it here. I will not go through it, but it's multiple pages long. And to just reinforce what you said, John, this is commonly referred to as a bid, but that's actually not correct. It's stated explicitly in the request for proposals that this is a redevelopment project, and there are a number of criteria that are within that RFP, which we can get into, but we are not treating any of the properties like a real estate transaction, where the highest bidder gets the property. That's not how it's approached at all. So I just wanna reinforce that point.
And, you know, also, taking a little bit of a step back to set some context. Five, seven years ago, the town was very concerned about Pfizer knocking down a building, the shrinking of our grand list, and something that was very important to the Town Council at the time and other town councils that was communicated with staff, was how can we get some redevelopment happening in Groton? How can we expand the grand list? Certainly not at the detriment of the town, but it was an important thing for us to do. We have a lot of vacant school properties, a lot of vacant town properties at that time. And what we communicated back is, yes, we can do this. It will take time. We need to develop basically economic development, marketing infrastructure. And that's why we've done many of the things that we have over the past few years, the webpage, a lot of our outreach, our marketing, to make people aware of what a great place Groton is, and to try to attract some development interest here. I won't go down that rabbit hole, but just setting a little bit of context. So that's a very brief history of how we got to the RFP process, some of the funding that we received from the state, and the fact that they were a partner in this. We took the lead on this request for proposal process, but they were still very much involved and had all the final say. We could certainly talk a little bit more about the RFP process and how, um, basically the submittals that we received, who was picked and why, and also the firms that were not picked and, and, and some of the why for that. Is that something that's of interest? I see some nodding heads.
How many counselors would, would like to hear about, we are all familiar with the other proposals. Do you wish for Mr. Reiner to address this again?
I think it's important for the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got two that are interested in having it addressed publicly. Okay. Very good. Go for it. Thank you.
All right. And we'll keep this brief. So Paige is going to take the lead on this. And, um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, John. Paige Bronk, Economic and Community Development Manager. Just to backfill a couple of details, um, I didn't want to interrupt. John mentioned VHB did a study. Uh, the name of that firm, uh, is officially Van Ness Hang in Brussels. They're a planning and engineering firm that did some preliminary conceptual, basically idea development. And there were a number of ideas. They didn't come up with one and said, this is the only use. They basically provided, um, a range of potential options, which were helpful. Also, under the marketing, um, we probably did about twenty plus showings on the property. And most, most interested parties now, they don't actually ever submit a proposal, a response to an RFP. But, um, there was, there was interest on the property. And then ultimately you have a, a shortlist of developers that do submit. So let's get into the, uh, RFP process. Um, as John mentioned, we did receive a grant to, uh, do the marketing and some of the promotions and develop the RFP and carry this process forward. The RFP, which, uh, I, I'd shown, and it's also public, was issued on December fifteenth, twenty seventeen. The proposals were due February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, a few months later. So what happens is the interested parties, they're provided a couple of months, basically, a little bit more to get their details in order, get ready to respond to an RFP and try to put their best proposal forward. There are four overarching criteria that, for evaluation in the, in the RFP. And, and there are some criteria underneath these four, but these are the, these are the four large ones. And again, this is not a bid process. Uh, the first one is project approach. How does the developer and the proposals will deal with project approach overall? Number two, the team's qualifications and experience. Number three, project viability and ability to execute in a timely manner. And number four, benefit to the state and town. So we want to make sure that whoever is going to be chosen can do this and they have the ability to actually do it. It's not just a vision. It's just not a dream. The review committee consisted of about ten individuals and it was a, a joint state and town committee. Again, this is state property, very different than the other former school buildings that we are trying to redevelop. The state had representation from the Department of Administrative Services, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the Office of Planning and Management, and also the Department of Economic and Community Development. So half of the committee was represented, uh, from state officials as appointed by the state, since it's their land. The other half of the committee were town representatives. We had staff from, uh, our department, Office of Planning and Development Services, uh, representation from Parks and Recreation. And we also had, uh, a couple of council liaisons on that committee. The overall objective in reviewing the proposals was basically to use the RFP as guidance, use the criteria that I mentioned, uh, and, and rank the proposals through a, a pretty extensive process and ultimately try to find a preferred developer. The state, at the very beginning of this process, uh, were quite emphatic about ensuring that everyone understood. State law requires this is a confidential process and violations by any of the committee members were subject to monetary or possibly other, other damages. Obviously, we didn't get to that point. We treated the process with the highest level of confid- confidentiality. No one was allowed to speak outside of that committee process in accordance with law. It was not an open public process. It very much was a, a negotiated back and forth understanding. There were four proposals and we ultimately could release the information about these proposals after the state ultimately signed the agreement for the sale of the property. The first proposal was a company called Globe Incorporated. Probably the easiest way to describe it, it was a, it was a real thin proposal. It, it didn't really satisfy the requirements as stipulated by the RFP. It included, uh, a concept to develop a private school at the property. And the committee at the first meeting decided not to grant that developer an interview. Initially, um, that we did score and there's, there's a scoring, um, a hundred point scoring system. This particular proposal, Globe Incorporated, received an initial score of nineteen. So clearly quite low. The second proposal was by a developer, uh, named Stackstone. Interesting idea, um, real passionate developer. They're based out of New York City. And visionary. It was impressive. And I, I think the committee found, they provided a good score. Was for a mixed-use development. They lacked experience. They lacked, uh, the financing that was needed. Although it was visionary, it lacked detail. It did propose about a hundred units, residential units, offices, reuse of the Pratt Building, saw a restaurant, co-work space. They wanted long-term tax abatements from the town and they wanted the state to pay for the environmental cleanup beyond what John had mentioned, the demolition of the existing buildings on site. They wanted the state to pay for, uh, the remediation for the rest of the property. That would be land and existing structures. And they required millions for, um, construction, financing for their private construction. The third, uh, proposal, Groton Housing Authority partnering with Carpe and Auto Properties out of Rhode Island. It was a very good initial proposal. I'm sorry, let me back up. Stackstone had received a scoring of fifty-nine with the initial, uh, submittal. Groton Housing Authority, very good proposal, mixed-use development. They called it a village community that they would create but a hundred ninety-two residential units. That would be a combined rental and homeownership. Conversion of the Pratt Building into recreation. They also proposed a, a, a generating net meter power source on site. That lacked detail. They talked about changing state law to enable that on the property and that it would require the town of Groton to enter into a, uh, an energy agreement with them to help them finance the project. It was, there was a question as to how property taxes would be paid to the town, given that they're nonprofit. They said that there would have to be, um, some form of a pilot agreement, payment in lieu, in lieu of taxes for the town, some site agreements, so we could get some sort of taxes from the property. The committee initially had some questions, uh, on that. That received an initial score of eighty-one. So very good score. The last one, Resspler Homes. Uh, similarly, very good initial proposal, mixed-use development. It was the most complete development of the four. It did recommend between seven hundred twenty-five and eight hundred and fifty residential units, commercial space, micro hotel, basically a small room hotel, coffee shop, small market, small pharmacy, research and development space on site, and converting the Pratt Building to recreation. There was, um, basically a strong connection to serving the local employees on the property. And that includes, uh, uh, for the community, that included Pfizer and Electric Boat. Also the Navy. They provided renderings, uh, plans for how they're going to convert the existing buildings on the site. They identified TIFF as a possible tool for roads and utilities. They had a strong financing plan, uh, where they would take out about a hundred and sixty-five million in construction financing, thirty million in their own owner equity. And they also provided a fiscal and economic study with the proposal. So we moved into, I'm sorry, the scoring on that, initial scoring, um, was seventy-seven. So both, both, um, Groton Housing Authority and Resspler were, you know, they were scoring pretty close together, considered very good. There were three interviews ult- ultimately that happened. The first interview included Stackstone, Groton Housing Authority and Resspler. The committee decided to move into a second interview with two finalists only, being Groton Housing Authority and Resspler. At that time, there were questions, uh, that had gone unanswered. And so there were some questions that were asked of both developers. And then we moved into a third interview to try to verify the answers we thought that both developers were providing. During that period of time, the committee had strong consensus that one of the developers was much stronger than the other. That would have been Resspler. Um, and there was no, there was no minority opinion on that. Ultimately, the final score after the interview process was ninety-one points for Resspler, sixty-seven points for Groton Housing Authority. So basically a twenty-four point differential. Just wrapping this up, there were some narrative comments from the committee as well. And I've tried to aggregate some of these. For the Groton Housing Authority project, one of the comments was more pricey suburban development. The financial viability was in question, uh, left me with more questions than answers. Confusing energy program requiring, requiring state law and future Groton energy purchase. Mixed, uh, understanding as to how taxes would be paid to the town and that their timeframe was fairly long, uh, five plus years to, uh, get to implementation. Comments on Resspler, uh, was a professional proposal with dynamic and adjustable possibilities, transformative, full team to deal with the project, detailed pro- project, flexible regarding density and detailed implementation schedule and excellent second interview. So that may have been a little long, but I, I think there've been a lot of questions about the process, starting from whether it's a bid, how the proposals were evaluated and how the preferred recommended developer came to be. So I, I think it's important to try to get that information out there to try to clarify. Thank you.
Before we move on from the RFP process, uh, again, you know, Paige had mentioned that it was, the committee is part of that was made up of state and local representatives. So I think it's very important just to kind of stress that piece. So moving from the RFP process, we can then jump over to the Planning and Zoning Commission process and the zoning process and talk about that, um, a little bit. And one of the, the, the key points with that is yes, the, the town has been working on new zoning for that property. Initially, when we spoke with our Planning and Zoning Commission, well, actually, uh, yeah. We were looking at a, an institutional reuse zone, which is something that's already on the books. But the zoning district that's in place for that now and the language was not really, um, designed for something of this size and scale. So when taking a draft of that to the commission first or some ideas, they said, no, we should try to create a special zoning district just for the Mystic Education Center and the redevelopment of that property. And we've been writing regulations and trying to put something together based upon feedback from the commission. But it's also been difficult because the commission has been involved with the zoning, but we haven't really had, um, Resspler Homes presenting their master plan or making an application. So there's a little bit of this cart and horse that's been happening. And I think the zoning, uh, type that we're looking at to adopt for this property is something called a floating zone, which is new as far as Groton goes. Floating zones are very common in Connecticut, but it's a new process. So it's been something that's been a little bit more difficult to get our arms around. And we've been trying to take revision to that zoning forward, but we kind of sometimes take two steps forward, three steps back. And the purpose of the meeting that we want to have next week is to try to work with the commission on, do you want to see the property rezoned? What is the process? And then let's start framing some of the big picture issues. Because I think sometimes we, we all get stuck too much in the details that we lose the, the bigger picture of what's happening. Because from a, a, a planning and zoning perspective, again, the commission is in the driver's seat. They have, they don't have to adopt a new zoning district. If a new zoning district is adopted, if an applicant looks to land that zoning district on their property, the way they do that is they have to make an application to then take that, that new zoning language and make it applicable to their property. If the new zoning language is actually applicable to their property and, for lack of a better term, lands on their property, then they have to make an application to actually develop the property consistent with that zoning language. The way that we were designing a floating zone is where we got into, we hear about, you know, master plans and site plans and well, who's responsible for everything? The master plan would be developed at the same time as the, the landing of the zoning. And if the commission didn't approve a master plan, then the project doesn't move forward. If the commission doesn't approve the zoning landing on the property, the project doesn't move forward. So those are some really key concepts that are still very much in our distance. I, we don't have an application, nor does Resspler have, uh, they have a conceptual master plan, but not something together yet that is formal and ready for application. People have asked, well, why not? Why don't we have this more formal application? Putting together those types of, um, applications and the, the backup material for those is incredibly time-consuming and expensive. And until they have an idea of what could be allowed on the property, they're not going to invest tens of thousands or possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars more developing plans that may never move forward. So, again, to not spend too much time on the Planning and Zoning Commission process, because that's, you know, we'll be talking about that next week with them. I, I can't stress enough, they're in the driver's seat. They're the ones that make the approvals. So the next steps along those lines are going to happen with them. And for the, you know, why is it taking so long? We get that question quite often. This is a complex redevelopment project. It's not something that we want to rush through. So we're taking our time and we're trying to make sure we get clear direction from the Planning and Zoning Commission on how to proceed forward. I can also talk a little bit about, uh, as, uh, Paige had briefly mentioned, TIFF or Tax Increment Financing and how it relates to this project and just very briefly touch upon that as it relates to the overall town of Groton. Is that something that people are interested in hearing a little bit about?
Counselors, thumbs up? Yes. Thank you, Reiner. And I would just ask counselors, um, as Mr. Reiner, Mr. Bronk are going, note your questions down. I like to let them get all their information out and then we can circle back to questions. So if you have something, just make a note of it and we'll come back to you at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're trying to be brief. Um, so if there's little, um, information and questions that you have, yes, please ask us, uh, as we get through. So tax increment financing is an economic development financing tool. And the town of Groton has adopted a policy for tax increment financing as well as two master plans that we've adopted. One, and along our Route One Corridor in, you know, the Miracle Mile area, as it's often referred to in Groton, as well as one is a, uh, one master plan that is a joint master plan with the city of Groton and the Five Corners and Thane Street area. With the reason we did a tax increment financing policy is so that there'd be very strict standards set for all of the future master plans- Uh, with the reason we did a tax increment financing policy is so that there'd be very strict standards set for all of the future master plans, because we knew we'd be making more than one for the town of Groton. The development of a master plan, of a TIFF district master plan is first reviewed by, um, basically the Economic Development Commission, working with staff. The Economic Development Commission serves as our TIFF advisory, Tax Increment Financing Advisory Committee. And they work in with staff as well as from the direction of the council, start preparing a master plan. Once they have a draft of that master plan developed, they would submit it to the council. The council would review it, make some comments, and then they, the council, the town council would send that document to the Planning and Zoning Commission under an eight-twenty-four referral and also back to the Economic Development Commission for a formal recommendation and referral. It would come back to the town council after those commissions met and discussed, and the council would hold a public hearing to, to get feedback and then to potentially adopt any new master plan. One item that is really important I want to, uh, lay out in our tax increment financing policy is that we have a, a standard in there that the town is not going to bond for private infrastructure improvements. So one of the ways that TIFF works is that if a developer wants to do a tax increment financing program with the town of Groton, first we need the master plan. Then something would be negotiated called a credit enhancement agreement between the developer and the town council. And as part of that, it would outline what are the specific items that the developer is going to design, pay for and build, but cost too much to make the project viable. So, and as part of that, once all of those items were, or if it's a phase project, once they are actually constructed and built and the developer is now, has built buildings and is paying taxes to the town, at that point in time, a portion of those taxes would then, of those future taxes would be returned back to the developer. So without the development happening, without the developer paying for or and building the infrastructure, TIFF dollars are never given to a developer back. So I think there's some confusion there of, oh, how is the town going to be on the hook for this? There is no town bonding. It's not something that we are going to be sending out to referendum, because there's nothing for us to build as an infrastructure project as part of TIFF, the way that we've constructed it in our TIFF dis- in our TIFF policy. So, um, that's kind of the, the broad workings of TIFF. At this point in time, we do not have a formal request for TIFF funding or I, I should say a specific amount of TIFF funding from, um, Ressplur Homes. Have they indicated that they need TIFF to make the project work in its current design? Yes, they have. What that means, we don't have those numbers yet. We don't have a formal request. I have not received a letter saying we need a TIFF for these five things and the expected cost is this. We haven't gotten to that point. It is still very premature in the, the project. Uh, maybe I used an acronym in there, something?
I was just wondering if you could give the example, it made a lot of sense to me. And if you could give the example that you would talk about the Marriott um, down to one eighty-four and how that would be used as TIFF for like sewers and how the town wouldn't put it in, because that really clarified it for me to understand how, how it would work.
Sure. So, um,
Excuse me, point of clarification, are we allowed to add in points?
Notice that you had your hand up before Council Board one.
Well, I guess because everyone else is asking clarifying and you're saying, hold on, but that's not in fact happening.
Ask everybody to hold their questions. Yes, I did. Um.
I'll, I'll revisit that question as I explain TIFF, um, a, a little bit later, if that's okay.
John, can I just add a simple comment about tax increment financing? It's important to understand that state by state, tax increment financing is very different. It's not one tool that's the same nationwide. It's not accurate to do some research online and to understand how it might work in California and then say it's not appropriate in Connecticut. Connecticut has entirely different, uh, state law pertaining to tax increment financing. In addition, municipalities can implement it in different ways. As John mentioned, the credit enhancement agreement, that's unique to Groton, so that we protect taxpayers and we protect Groton as a whole. So, uh, are the way we have promoted the, this particular tool is, um, probably quite different from how it works nationwide. Uh, it's, it's fairly restrictive and, uh, does not involve that much risk because we are not putting the towns bonding on the line. We entirely would rely on private financing on the front end of the project.
Uh, thank you, Paige. You brought up a couple of very good, uh, points there. Uh, one in particular being that we did a lot of research and working with our, uh, consultant, uh, Camoyan Associates on this project, on the development of TIFF prior to jumping into this initiative. And we looked at examples of, you know, places like California and others where TIFF didn't work out so well for those states or those municipalities. And we learned from those lessons. We also, as we were developing, um, our initial policy, working with our finance department and our bonding council, they were concerned about, wait a minute, are we going to be bonding? That's something that we took off the table because we didn't want to have that level of risk or exposure to the town. And, you know, the basic mechanism of how tax increment financing works is it looks at the value of a property as it is today and what the future growth of that taxes, of that tax base is with the redevelopment. And it, it's very important that TIFF can only be utilized in certain situations. For example, in Groton, the project, the total project redevelopment cost, not including the purchase of the property has to be over a million dollars. And there's also the but for criteria, that but for TIFF, the project couldn't happen. So it's not just, uh, you know, a giveaway or a handout. You know, people talk about, you know, tax abatements. Those are very different. Are the enterprise zone that we have, which is a taxing, uh, program, very different than how tax increment financing works. Tax increment financing looks at, you know, if the, the baseline, uh, property value today is a million dollars and if a redevelopment project is going to happen, that is getting into, that will bring the value of that property up to fifty-one million dollars, then the increment, the difference there is a fifty million dollar value of the property. And whatever the assessed value of that property is, that's something that could be utilized for tax increment financing. In the town's TIFF policy, we authorize or recommend that in most cases we would use up to fifty percent of the, the tax difference there, but we could use up to seventy-five percent. And that can be used for things like a sewer line extension that might go to, that might, um, exceed the beneficial cost for one developer to do to get it to that property. But over the long term, utilizing TIFF can help pay some of that back. I, I can certainly, under questions, I can get into that in a little bit more, um, thoroughly, but that's the basic premise of TIFF, which I, I really didn't kind of get into a little bit of the finances. Couple other quick points that we wanted to talk about on the property and then I think kind of switch it over to questions. One of them is the land area of the property, which I, I think, uh, there's been some confusion on that. So the Mystic Education Center land, the, the main parcel is approximately seventy-seven acres in size. And this is state property and this is the land that is on the eastern side of Oral School Road. And it is actually the responsibility, um, of the control of the property is between Connecticut, um, DECD, Department of Economic and Community Development. And it is one parcel today. The proposal moving forward is that it is one parcel, but what would be redeveloped is approximately forty acres of the land, kind of the top area which is cleared. And then the thirty-seven acres, which goes down the hill towards River Road, would be permanently protected. That is something that the state was very adamant about. The only, um, development activities, um, and I use that term, um, very hesitantly on the thirty-seven acres, the protected land, would be to build trails, to build a trail network going from the upper land down to River Road and then along River Road, improving the boat launch. We've had questions or comments brought up about how could the town allow a road to be built down that hill? A road is not going to be built down that hill. That is not something that's going to happen. That thirty-seven acres is going to be protected by the state. That is something that they are adamant about. The town is on board with, and I, I think that's something that's very easy to clarify. It is part of the overall size of the property, but that area will be set aside and preserved in the future. There is additional state land on the western side of the road as well as, um, another sixteen plus acres that, uh, Ressplur Homes has purchased from private property develop, uh, private property interests since, uh, they were awarded, um, kind of the preferred developer status to help with access and pr- in traffic improvements down the road. But that's all contingent upon a project actually moving forward. We could also talk, we kind of hit the majority of the big picture issues. Um, the one that's still out there a little bit, uh, or the two, one's the Pratt Building and the other is a little bit on infrastructure. Uh, infrastructure and then environmental studies. So I think the easier one of those two is, um, basically traffic improvements, environmental studies and those levels of analyses, those will be done. Very basic, um, infrastructure analyses, looking at capacity for sewers, capacity for water, traffic volumes. Those have been, uh, initially conducted by the developer, but they haven't done major traffic analyses or other design for stormwater, for, um, for water use, or you know, full out projections in those items, or at least we haven't seen them because we don't have an application yet. And those types of studies, traffic studies get incredibly expensive. They do realize some of the general improvements that they need, but that's kind of the, the, the broad basis for that. And then the, the last topic, which we could talk a little bit about is the Pratt Building. Is that something council members would like us to talk a little bit about the reuse of that?
Um, I'm not sure that that's high on the list this evening, counselors. Do you want them to talk Pratt Building tonight?
I'm interested in the whole plan, so.
How many counselors want to hear Pratt Building tonight? Two? Three? All right, briefly, Mr. Reiner, we, we have addressed this before and there is, um, we've been kind of holding off on things on that because everything is uncertain. Go ahead, Mr. Reiner. Thank you.
Sure. So I'll stay very broad with the Pratt Building. So the Pratt Building is an old recreation complex that is on the site. It is substantial in size and requires extensive renovation. But it's also a great asset to the site and for the town. It is something that we, the town had brought to the attention of all the developers on this, and that was one of the recommendations as part of that VHB, uh, study, VHB being the name of that, uh, engineering and planning firm that Paige had mentioned earlier, that looking at the reuse of that, the pool and even the demolition of that building, if that's what it came to, would be incredibly expensive. The reuse of the building, although expensive, would, would be a great asset to the community. The only way to get a private developer to pay for the reuse of that building is to use tax increment financing and there has to be enough revenue from the development itself to help offset that cost. And that's how TIFF and the Pratt Building redevelopment could become a part of this project. If this project is substantially reduced in size, which it very, very well may be, the reuse of the Pratt Building may no longer be, um, a viable option, or at least to be funded by, uh, private development interest. Um, Paige, I don't know if you want to weigh anymore on Pratt?
I think you pretty much covered it. Just, um, when you said the, the building is sizable, it's, uh, about forty thousand square feet. It's, it's huge. And we always believed that it was an asset and, and people that, uh, have lived in Groton a long time tell some amazing stories of how they've used it, whether or not they had their prom there, the gymnasium, or uh, possibly they, they had swimming lessons in a, a warm heated pool and how nice it would be to actually bring that back. Um, and our belief is that it's probably cheaper to try to work with an existing asset that has some of those, uh, characteristics than attempt to build this somewhere else and bond and get approvals. Since it's already there and it was already used, we, we were, we were receptive and supportive of integrating that in some future development.
That was the kind of general overview we wanted to give on the property, the process, kind of where we are, where, and you know, where we're looking to go. It really, it's next week's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. That's what's going to start setting the path for this forward, but all of these things are going to take time. With that, happy to answer as many questions as necessary.
Okay, just very quickly, the meeting on the fourteenth is a workshop with Planning and Zoning and you?
Yes.
Very good. And that would be broadcast?
Correct. That'll be, uh, held on Zoom.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. So I had Council Board on first. Council Board on, you have the floor?
I'm just finishing my notes. My hand was up a while ago and came down, so you can come back to me. Thank you.
So do you want me to take other people out of order? And that's fine.
I'm just rewriting my notes.
Franco and then Council O'Gree.
Hold on a minute, let me turn my air off. I'm sorry. Um, so the questions that I'm getting and I see on social media, some of them are how much of my tax dollars, like my tax dollars that I pay to the town is going to be used, um, for this development?
In, in which way? So right now, the only tax dollars that are being used for this development are staff time. Um, are we doing some analyses to help, um, look at the, the viability of this project for the town? Yes, looking at tax increment financing as we get proposals for that. Yes, they'll, we'll utilize some funding for that. Um, the majority of the work on the zoning was actually paid for through the State Brownfields Grant. Some of the anal- or the analysis that the town did looking at the Pratt Building, that was something that was certainly paid for by the town. So we could have our own experts look at that and not just take, uh, the developer's word for it. I think those are some of the, the, the biggest things. Uh, Paige, anything else you want to weigh in on that?
Uh, the survey. Uh, Great Blue Survey.
Yes.
But I think that the answer is that not, not really that much as a result of the, um, the state grant, uh, with the exception of the, the staff time. So that, that's accurate.
I, I do not see the town paying for infrastructure improvements associated with this, whatever development happens there. Uh, one of the great things about getting into a little bit into the weeds on the, the planning and zoning process, a floating zone in that master plan allows the town to require a developer to build off-site improve, onsite and off-site improvements, be that traffic improvements and, um, infrastructure off the property, whereas that's not normally allowed within your normal site plan review process. So that's one of the important things about that master plan process.
Thank you. And then, um, I hear people who are repeatedly asking, why isn't this type of development or this development going in the downtown Groton area? And there's, they're basically saying they, um, there's empty plazas down there and why isn't it going there?
So I think both Paige and I can weigh in on this one. So some of the, um, one, first, you need a willing landowner to sell their property in order for a developer to build their property. And I'm not aware of a whole lot of those empty, those, um, quote unquote, empty plazas, you know, downtown that are up for sale right now. There are some lots and some sites that are up for sale and we get a lot of development interest in those. There may be some storefronts that are empty, that might look underutilized, but there are, in many instances, redevelopment plans in process for, for many of those. Would the town love to see more redevelopment, higher density, mixed use development on the Route One corridor? Yes, we've put it in our plans. We put it in our zoning. We have a tax increment financing district for that. But we can't force people to redevelop in their property. We can't force them to sell their property. Here, we have a state-owned piece of property. Here, we have a state-owned piece of property that has access to water, that has access to sewer. Route ninety five is not that far away. It has infrastructure availability and it is what is referred to as a gray field. It's actually a brownfield site, but it's also, it's an already developed site. And there were many more buildings on that property just a few years ago that have been recently demolished. So it is a site that is ripe for redevelopment. What the right development and intensity of development is, that's still a big question mark.
And what about the housing need in Groton? I've heard people say there's a study that shows that. Groton doesn't need any more housing and that we're all set for the EB workers.
So the joint land use study is part of that had, we had given them a list of all of the projects that. Developers were talking to us at the time about doing. And that included the Sealy School redevelopment, that included Mystic Education Center. Estimates for if Pleasant Valley was developed, as well as Gold Star Highway. Properties on Pleasant Valley Road. Many of these different items that we had been, people kind of kicking the tires a little bit more were all included in that estimate. That also, that estimate did not do a super deep dive into all of the future growth and employment in the area. So assuming that study was done a few years ago. And assuming all of the development that we were projecting. That we've been talking about, that we think is going to happen in Groton, which none of it's really been built yet. Happens at that point, they said, all right, this could fill the need. But it didn't also fully address, and I know people might feel like we sound like a broken record, but that eighty twenty. The fact that only twenty percent of our workforce lives here, that is still a very valid and relevant number. Because that number is actually, the EB workforce has only grown since we came up with that. We have not built a lot of new housing units since we came up with that number. And right now, we're in the process of doing two different housing market analyses. Very specific to housing in Groton, one more focused on affordable housing. The other looking at housing across the broad spectrum in Groton. I expect to have some more results of that within the next month. I believe we have an Affordable Housing Public Meeting on June sixteenth. I would strongly encourage people to attend that meeting and listen of what we've learned. There's some absolutely fascinating data out there, which we can. Put those first presentations out on the web if they're not already there. But, you know, we have a shortage of housing at the high end, at the low end, and there's, there's a need in the middle too. So there's still a housing shortage in Groton.
And. So even if we give TIF for projects of this size, and I'm, I'm not sure what size it's going to come in at. But I can only use the number that has been put on the table if it was to go. As big as it's been proposed. It's three point eight million and then we, some would get refunded to the developer and the town would keep. The remainder and. Some people think that the town is not going to get any kind of tax benefit. Is that correct? Will we get, um, there's been talk of the town having to pay for. Extra police and extra road maintenance and updating of electrical and sewers. And all the other things that the town may have to do. Can you talk on that?
Sure, so many of those items, so I'll, I'll try to, there's, there's a, a lot of layers to that onion. So first, even if we, you know. So three point eight is a, is a number that's been put out there of projected tax revenue at full buildout. If the town were to pay back some of that money through tax increment financing, we would still be netting. You know, a million, two million dollars. It, it all depends on the negotiation of that credit enhancement agreement. Which also then gets into, all right, what of the infrastructure? So for example, any sewer lines, any water lines that need to be improved on the property and increasing capacity. That's something that generally developers pay for. And that is something that the developer would design, pay for, build. But maybe looking for some funding from that as part of the tax increment financing credit enhancement agreement. That is something that would be negotiated between the developer and the town. The same goes for roadway construction. If they were building a new roadway through the sixteen acre parcel. From kind of the, the front of the Oral School down to Cow Hill Road. That's going to be an expensive roadway to build and the traffic signals that have to be built as part of that. Those things are incredibly expensive. I know during some of our CIP discussions, some of the council members were amazed at how much it was to put in a new traffic signal. Those things add up to a lot of money. Those would all be things that would potentially be eligible for under the tax increment financing credit enhancement agreement. But the council doesn't have to grant those. The same goes for the improvements to the Pratt Building and other infrastructure improvements on site. Those are all the initial improvements we can require the developer to build those. The next question gets into maintenance. That is what we would want to accept as a town as public roads versus private roads or private infrastructure. And I think that is something that is still very conceptual at this point in time. But if we're getting millions of dollars in tax revenue, that's a discussion that we have to look at with the developer. As far as additional police or fire, we haven't done the study yet. Looking at is, would there be a need for an additional officer to be driving through there during all shifts? Or is the current workforce adequate? Certainly have to talk to the police department about that. We've had initial conversations with the fire department. They're aware that a project's going to happen up there. We really haven't gotten to the staffing issues at this point in time. And. Trying to, I, I think that was the, the majority of the, the question, was that, did that answer everything you asked there?
I think so, thank you. I'll allow somebody, do I have any time left?
You have fifty one seconds.
Oh, okay. So the, would the fire district receive their own fire district tax as well?
I believe that they would, if, if, if they are collecting a fire district tax currently, then yes.
And then can you give maybe a possible timeline for a decision on planning and zoning? Are we looking at a year, six months, three months?
I don't see, it all depends. It, it's really hard to say, I don't see in decision, there's so many decisions. So to adopt a new zoning text, which would just be text in the book, not even applicable to this property. That could be. Three to nine months. The developer then making an application. Could take another six to nine to twelve months. And that would be an application to land the zoning on the property as well as apply for a master plan. Now, this is assuming that the commission adopts some type of a floating zone. And then once a master plan was actually, you know, and then, so that's for them to make application. There's public hearings for all of that, there's review. That whole process could take six months or more. If it's approved, then. The applicant would then have to start designing specific phases, doing more analysis, studies, et cetera. Going to inland wetlands before they can go for any site plan approvals. We're still a ways out. And all of this is dependent upon, you know, two bodies or, you know, one of those bodies being the Planning and Zoning Commission. But the other one is the applicant and how quickly they do or do not move things through the process.
Right, and the final is, could you give the example that you had told before about Route?
One eighty four.
One eighty four down one seventeen about the sewer from the Marriott with the developer who might want to develop down there.
Sure, I'll, I'll do that as best as I can from memory. Cause I know I had that all on point before. So for example, Route one eighty four, one seventeen at the northern intersection of. At that property, there was a developer that had been talking to us, it was probably five years ago or so now, where the time goes. About redeveloping that property. And in order to do that, he needed to do tax increment financing. He needed tax increment financing mostly to extend the sewer line from the Marriott up to that intersection of Route one eighty four. The cost of extending that sewer line, I think was somewhere in the ballpark of four million dollars. It could have been a little bit more, it could have been five, it was somewhere around there. If, for example, today, if that developer was paying one million dollars in property taxes for that, all of that property. Under their redevelopment, I'm sorry, if it was assessed at one million dollars. Under their redevelopment scenario, it was going to be assessed probably somewhere in the fifty plus million dollar. Range, which would then take. A significant amount of new property taxes coming into the town. So fifty million dollars per rounding purposes, we might be going from, if at a million dollars, maybe before they were paying. I'll say fifty thousand dollars a year in property taxes at fifty million dollars. They're going to be paying somewhere around a million dollars plus. So even if you said a million and fifty thousand dollars in property taxes. That increment, that increase is one million dollars a year in new property taxes. Well, that sewer line, say if it's estimated to cost about four million dollars. We could have the developer design it. Build it and pay for it on their dime. And we could enter into that credit enhancement agreement if a tax increment financing master plan was developed for the property. And over a period of twenty years or ten years, whatever the town wanted to set it at. Slowly repay that developer back once he has completely built out the development. Or built out the development and is paying taxes. We would then take fifty percent or a portion of those taxes to slowly pay that development back. The development of that sewer line. One of the things we actually haven't talked about with TIF and some of the things that get paid for through these credit enhancement agreements. Is those improvements aren't just for that single development. Because by extending a sewer line up Route one seventeen to the intersection of one eighty four. All the other businesses around there would then be able to tie into the sewer line. The same thing goes for. If natural gas was to be extended up to the Mystic Education Center, which is something that has been discussed. There would also be the ability to have natural gas go to some of the neighborhoods around there. So, you know, neighborhoods that might now be relying on well water. If they wanted to, could tie into a water line, if water lines were extended. So those are some other ancillary improvements or benefits that happen to the surrounding properties when you do these other infrastructure improvements.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Overy? You're muted, Councilor Overy?
Okay. The thing that I want, you've explained it. But once again, if you would allow me. I want the community to understand. That right now, the council is not in a position to do anything about anything that's really going on. Except encourage planning and zoning to do the zoning tax. Am I correct?
There is no decision pending before the town council or actionable item at this time.
Right. So even though we're getting all these emails and. Just be inundated by people telling us to just stop this, that is not a possibility. I don't believe, because I think we would open ourselves up to a lot of legalities. Do you, would you agree?
I would agree with that. I would consult with the town attorney, but again, there is no application, so there's nothing to deny and there's nothing to stop. Right now, today, Mr. Restblair. Under his, you know, Restblair Homes has an option to purchase that property from the state of Connecticut. We, he also has purchased other properties adjacent to the Mystic Education Center. And he is a property owner in the town, has an interest to move a development project forward. When he so sees fit to move that application forward with an application. That's when we'll see something happen and then that will then create an, an actionable item.
Okay, well, as I say, I just wanted to reiterate that to the public. That there is a process, it's being worked on, it takes longer than probably any of us with any of, of the things that we have going on right now. But I, I know it sounds rather simplistic. But you know, when I first ran for the council with many of the people that are sitting here with me tonight, not with me, it'd be nice if we were together. This was what this town wanted. Now, they may not like some part about it, but they got to understand it has to go through the process. The council can be encouraging of development, which I feel this council is very, very much behind wanting to see. New housing. And. It's just, I think it's hard for some of them to grasp a hold of the whole process. So I, I think this should be very, very helpful. I think those were great questions, Councilor Franco. And I, I want to tell you, you guys have really made me feel an awful lot better. Anybody has a question now, they can put this on and watch it at home and everything should be there for them. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Bronck, did you wish to say something right now? You're mute, where did you go?
Yes, thank you. Just to build on that comment, I don't believe the town is in any rush. And, and I know there are concerns about the proposed size of the project. There's, there's really no deadline for the town. The pressure really is upon the two parties that entered into the. Real estate agreement, which is the state and Restblair. We can take the time to find out what the answer is. There is some middle ground. And once, as John had mentioned, from the town standpoint, Planning and Zoning Commission will have conversations with. Restblair and the answer will come out at some point as to what the right size project is. So there is no deadline, I don't believe there's anything the council needs to do. And after there's direct conversation between the developer and the Planning and Zoning Commission. I, I think that's when people can find out what is the right path forward. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you, Councilor Overy, were you, were you all set?
All set. I, I, go back to the chair.
Thank you. Councilor Bordel, are you ready to ask your question?
Sure, thank you. So in regard, in regards to the RFP, I feel that it's very broad and I do think the town has an obligation. In the sense that when you're talking about one development had a hundred and ninety two, the next one had seven hundred and twenty five to eight fifty. I, I believe anything where it's going to impact the people, especially in this development, if they're going to be. If they're not part of the process early on, then, and they're not part of the decision-making where it can be. Pertinent. It, it becomes invalid to the surrounding area. And in this situation, this did not happen. When we spoke tonight, you stated the committee, the staff and the town were there. I also was told an RTM member, I believe from District Four was there. Nobody from District Five and nobody in the surrounding areas. So my question is, how come and nobody from the area and none of the stakeholders, meaning the residents in that area, were part of that discussion? In that committee, that's my first question. And I'll stop for that first.
I'll, I'll try to take a stab at that. I, I think, to be direct, I don't believe that. If a neighborhood were to weigh in on their desires for a piece of property. I'm not sure that we would be able to move any of these redevelopment projects forward. Not to be confused with public input at the appropriate time. There certainly should be, but these projects are more than a neighborhood alone. They're about Groton as a whole. And actually, Groton as a whole has supported the redevelopment of this particular property. And others in town. And I think there's an appropriate time for that back and forth to occur. Typically at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. Also, the preferred developer status is not an absolute award guaranteeing that there'll be any development at that site. It's basically to measure. Who is going to be your likely partner moving forward? And in this case, Restblair had stated that he's willing to scale the project. That was, that was mentioned even during. that he's willing to scale the project. That was, that was mentioned even during the interviews themselves. Specific to your point, whether or not there should be more residents involved, I, I think that's ultimately a town decision. If that's something the council desired, then, then it, it will be that way. Uh, but, but typically these projects, as I mentioned regarding state law, they were, they were penalties if that information was actually going to get out to the public or anyone else. There were monetary damages, uh, possibly beyond. So the state actually takes this process quite seriously and understands that when they dispose of public property, it is not intended to be an open process. It's intended initially from the beginning to involve discussions on what the market might bring to a particular property of this size. We, we could never prescribe or envision what is best. If, if it was that simple, we would basically just develop a proposal saying, we're looking for X. But in fact, we're looking for a variety of answers or solutions, creativity that we hadn't even yet envisioned. So I know that's a philosophical discussion. If there were going to be more public involved on the front end, I, I ultimately defer to the council. But at the same time realize that will uh, have some impact on the process in terms of who we're going to attract, how business friendly, uh, we will be viewed by the community and whether or not we can actually get these properties redeveloped.
Thank you. Um, so
If I could just weigh in one tiny piece on there too, um, just to follow up on something Paige said. Again, this is a state property. I'm actually happy that we were part of the process that the town was able to utilize that VHB study and help direct the RFP process and be a major part of that process because the state could have done this without us. And then here we would be having a development team that would be coming in. And again, all we did was pick someone that can possibly redevelop, redevelop the site. What is going to ultimately happen as part of that is entirely a town decision that'll be dictated by both the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the council. Because if the Planning and Zoning Commission approves a project that requires tax increment financing and the council doesn't like the, the tax increment financing proposal that's put forward, or it doesn't, you know, want to adopt the master plan, then, all right, then the project's not going to move forward in, in that mechanism. But there's still, we're so early in the process. That's all I had to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, again, I still think the surrounding residents early on before it's the preferred developer is decided, the town can just survey and see what they'd like in that area. Um, regards to the, um, you know, how did, how did the committee decide to approve, approve a development that did not fit the existing zoning? So we did have a stake in here because our zoning is on the line, our planning and zoning depicts that. So we approved something that said seven hundred and twenty-five to eight fifty. So how did we get there? Why are we approving something before our planning and zoning have a chance to look at it?
I, I can touch on that as well. I, I think nothing's approved. That, that's already been stated. There, there is no approval.
Let me rephrase my words. How come we have the preferred developer without the zoning regs in place?
Zoning is not absolute. It's not carved in stone. I mean, we just went through an entire zoning overhaul and zoning is intended to be amended over time. And it's not absolute to exist forever. And a property like this, there, there is no other in Groton. We, we're not going to find an eighty plus acre public piece of, piece of property that used to be the school for the deaf. That's not going to be found anywhere. It, it's a unique almost once in a lifetime situation. And I think it's intended in going through an RFP process to find creative, innovative solutions and find some common ground where we can. Maybe, maybe we cannot entertain a project of this intensity. We're going to find out, but nothing was dismissed in casting a wide net and trying to find answers for something that has been in existence for over a century and now no longer exists. And we're not sure what to do with it. So that was the purpose of the RFP and trying to find out how we might be able to develop a partnership, how possibly we could turn this almost albatross into an opportunity for Groton.
It, it should also be mentioned, when we received that Brownfields grant, one of the components of that grant was to rewrite the zoning for this property. When we were doing the townwide rewrite, we wanted to get into the zoning of this property. But that process unfortunately took a lot longer than we thought it would. And, you know, we had a lot of pressure to get that done in the Planning and Zoning at the time, the zoning commission said, you know what, the rezoning of the Mystic Education Center, that's going to be on the newly formed Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's when they'll get to that. And unfortunately, we didn't get to it soon enough. It also should be mentioned that I don't believe any of the proposals that we received met the existing zoning on the site. The current property as it sits now doesn't meet the zoning on the site. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use. So just to follow up on what Paige had said, zoning is an ever-changing thing, just like our plan of conservation and development is a, is a, you'll hear me talk about it. It's a living, breathing document. As the town changes, so will the P O C D, so will our change, uh, so will our zoning.
And then my last thing is, um, you know, it would seem to me that early on when we're, we're vetting these preferred developers that we would include in our documents, um, a legal aspect or vetting to make sure that we are doing, you know, our due diligence and background checks to make sure at any point we protect ourselves that if we ever needed to pull out for whatever reason, conflict of interest or any legal things that have happened, that that is in the standing document. Also, it would make sense as well that the police and fire and all the other desires of that area, when you're looking at seven hundred and twenty-five to eight hundred and fifteen units that we considered our preferred development, that we're making sure that that area and all of those types of studies are complete. So moving forward, why are we not vetting our preferred developers in a background manner?
I, I think the process is always evolving, and I think we can always do better. But in this, in this situation, as was mentioned, this is state property. Actually, we were not privy to the agreement between the state and the developer. When all those state agencies that I mentioned, particularly the Department of Administrative Services, they did their review and draft to the agreement, which went back and forth between those attorneys from the developer and the state. We, we were not a part of that. And there was no due diligence per se from a legal standpoint that the town had to complete. If we were moving forward and obligated the town in any particular way, I, I think that is appropriate to make sure that we do some more research. But I think as a result of this particular process we've gone through, we have modified. We, we now are moving forward and it's something we had not experienced in the past, and we are wanting to make sure that we're not caught in that type of situation. So we're adding that to our process. But in this particular project, the state certainly was not too concerned in moving forward with their sales agreement with the developer.
Well, we were going to have a joint contract with the Pratt Building, so we did have an invested interest, and that's my concern. We're looking at
Maybe, maybe.
Right, potentially, and we didn't do our vetting process.
Well, I wouldn't say that, no. I, I think we were quite a, a distance from that. We don't even have a draft agreement. We hadn't discussed any terms. Uh, exactly, you know, how, what was the length of that agreement? How we were going to ensure if we wanted to, to acquire that property in the future, we, we had, we were a long way from that conversation.
Thank you. I just hope that we see more involvement. We have an RTM in the town. It would be important to bring in those members when, when you're bringing around a committee. Thank you.
Are there other counselors with first time questions or comments? I, I have a couple of things I just wanted to, to ask or clarify for people watching from at home. Um, so Mr., Mr. Reiner, Mr. Bronk, you've mentioned a lot of documents that are out there. If the public wants to read more about the various proposals, where do they find those things?
Right now, we have, some of those documents are available on either Explore More Groton.com or on the Town of Groton webpage under Planning and Development. We actually have a list. I just looked, I think there are either forty-seven or fifty-two different documents as it relates to Mystic Educate, forty-seven documents as it relates to the Mystic Education Center from environmental remediations, uh, environmental assessments, the Ressler proposal, the RFP, signed town and Ressler agreement, state documents, and if there are other documents that exist that people are looking for, we're happy to share those and post them out there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of the, one of the things we hear, and it is very hard to quantify, even though you tried valiantly tonight, what kind of tax revenue will the town see from this? And I just want to run by what I think the answer is, then you could correct me if I'm wrong. We don't know that until planning and zoning approves a project. Because they may approve something that is not at all like this concept plan, in which case the amount of tax dollars generated would be very different. So at this juncture, it is truly difficult for the town to say it's going to be X amount of money because we don't know what planning and zoning is doing. Is that, is that correct reasoning, or is there flaws in that?
No, that is very much correct reasoning. One of the different, really difficult things with this project is there's so many chickens and eggs and carts and horses. That until we really know what the project is going to be, it's hard to quantify. All right, what should the traffic improvements be? What is the sewer line capacity? What is the stormwater handling going to be? What is the tax revenue going to be? What is the estimated TIF credit enhancement agreement? The, the best answer to all of those right now is, I don't know. It all depends on the scope and magnitude of the project.
Thanks. And that is frustrating for all of us. I think we would all just like quick and easy answers, and we'd, we'd like to know exactly what's going to happen, when it's going to happen. Um, but unfortunately, we don't know that yet.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like when you're trying to buy a house and you're bidding on it with five other people and you're just waiting to hear, and why can't I hear? Why didn't I get it? You know, and, and sometimes it's, it, we, we're all in this waiting game that some of it is really depending on when the applicant makes an application.
So then the next step is there, there are things that Planning and Zoning Commission has to do. There are things that the applicant has to do, but as Counselor Overy stated earlier, there really isn't anything that this body as a council does at this point in the process. There will be in the future, but not right now.
That is correct.
So then for the public to express their desires, the public should be reaching to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
And they have been reaching to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They've been reaching out to staff. They've been reaching out to the council. I think the difficult thing is that they are looking for action. They are looking for answers. They're looking for the project to stop or for the project to move forward. Why isn't more happening? A lot of that is really dependent upon the applicant to, to move things forward. Yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will continue to try to move that ball forward. But a lot of that is also depending upon, you know, at some point in the near future, I truly believe that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the applicant need to have a real conversation about the redevelopment of the property. As the applicant, as the the owner and option owner of the property obviously has some vested interest. If a new zoning text is developed that is infeasible or unfeasible for redevelopment, that's something that should be vetted out before it's adopted.
I lost my train of thought.
Sorry if I went too long.
No, I was distracted for a minute. Um, so the meeting on the fourteenth, which is Monday.
Yes.
That's a, that's a good first step for the public to become more involved and to hear more about what's going on with the zoning reg. Then we wait after that is done, we wait for the applicant to act. Um, and then we will know more. But at this point, we're kind of in a holding pattern, unfortunately.
Yes. Um, and we're hoping to also have another workshop next week. So we're hoping to have one on the fourteenth and to hold one on the seventeenth of June. We'll see how things go on the fourteenth, both of those with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and just try to move things forward.
Thank you. And, and I would ask for GMTV and Mr. Greeley, if, when you're doing your replay for YouTube and for the town website, if you could just note, get the times and the dates of these meetings that the public can tune into, please, and just maybe run them as a crawl underneath as Mr. Reiner was describing what was going to be happening, please. And the other thing is, you are more than welcome to keep sending counselors your, your views on things and we can forward them to planning and zoning, or you could write directly to them if you continue to wish to express your concerns, which we are, we are happy to hear from you and share those concerns with the commission members as well. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Are there any other first time speakers? I saw Counselor Heed. Okay, there we go. I thought you were going, you turned your camera on, so I thought you were going to talk. You have the floor, Counselor Heed. You're muted, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank John Reiner and Paige Bronk for a pretty thorough presentation. It's always good to get a refresher. Uh, thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Any other first time hands? If not, we'll go back to second round. Counselor Franco, you have?
Thank you. Um, so I've also heard people in the community who are mentioning that Ressler has missed contract deadlines. And some of those deadlines would be the TIF and Pratt Building. And in my mind, we wouldn't be doing those until after we figure out what kind of project can even go forward. Is that correct?
Correct.
So you just mentioned a moment ago that the applicant, we're waiting on the applicant to move forward. But also you said, but we're waiting on planning and zoning to do a floating zone. So who are we waiting on first to make the first move here?
So, oh, a, again, it's one of those chicken and egg type of questions because in some instances like this, you might see a developer move forward and propose a zoning text amendment. In this instance, we were trying to work on something internally. So right now, the ball is in the court of staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission to try to move a zoning text amendment forward. Then, once something is adopted, if something gets adopted, then the ball is in the applicant's court. If nothing gets adopted, then the ball again, switches back to the applicant's court, and they can either propose their own zoning amendment or try to develop the property under the current zoning that's in place.
All right. And I had asked town manager, Mr. Burke, about having a public meeting with the community to answer those questions as well. And will you be doing that in the future? This is not the community meeting, correct?
This is not necessarily a community meeting. We're happy to have some type of a public meeting or forum. I, I think that the tricky part is without an application to comment on, without, um, I, I don't know exactly what we would cover. I know there's a lot of questions that have come up. You know, we have pages of questions on this project, some of them that, you know, range from, you know, why is it taking staff so long to put this, uh, project? You know, we have pages of questions on this project. Some of them that, you know, range from, you know, why is it taking staff so long to put this project together or the zoning together? Well, it, it takes time and we're looking for a clear direction. You know, when is the master plan going to be done? There's, there's a lot of things that, it, it's all based upon something in the future that we don't have answers to. So, there's so many of the, the questions that are being asked right now. The answer is, well, it all depends, and we'll know sometime in the future. Paige, I don't know if you want to weigh in a little more on that?
Yeah, what keeps coming back to my thought is, we actually believe we've been transparent, and I know some people don't see it that way. However, what usually happens with a private property, a project is refined and becomes absolute. They make application, and interested parties are notified, and they go and respond at the Planning and Zoning Commission or whatever level. It could be HTC Wetlands. And I think the public's accustomed to a project being so far advanced that when there are conversations with a board or commission, that there must be absolute detailed plans. The public's not accustomed to a public redevelopment project involving state or town property where a concept is floated with significant details and processes ahead. I, I think that's confusing for some people, and they expect these quick answers, timelines, deadlines, and absolute responses, which, which do not exist. That, that's what continues to come up. And I think we're prepared to get it right, whatever that is. And that's why it, it might be difficult for people to understand how this has actually progressed to date.
All right, and then my last question is just, um, so Planning and Zoning can come up with a floating zone and text change item, and they could say that the project on this site could be an X number of units. But then a traffic study could come back, and after reviewing the traffic study, that could even change it as well and make it a different number, possibly even lower. Is that correct? So, it's not, the first step has, passes, there's other steps that also go into play in the future. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Boardland, did you have another question?
Or, I had a quick question on, how come Planning and Zoning can't be part of the RFP process earlier on?
So, if Planning and Zoning were part of the process selecting, selecting the developer, there's a really good chance that they would then have to recuse themselves.
Let me restart my question then, because I, I think you're understanding me wrong. The RFP is usually done before you have a preferred developer, correct?
Correct.
Right, so the RFP would be a town decision, so I understand the privacy of the developer. So, what I'm asking is, how come Planning and Zoning couldn't be involved earlier before there is a planned developer, so they're not part of that private, you know, contract that they cannot hear about? Why aren't they brought in earlier when making towns' decisions on the RFP to make sure things look a little bit more feasible earlier on?
I, I think one of the difficult things with the Mystic Education Center property, as we've talked about a little bit tonight, Paige had mentioned. So, this is a property, one that is not a town-owned property, and it's like no other property in town. We didn't know what the redevelopment assumptions were going to be for this property going into it. The majority of our other RFPs that we are putting out there for other properties, it's pretty clear what the zoning is on the property. And if there was a school, there's, their zoning is in place for some type of redevelopment. And yes, could a developer propose something different? But then they would have to go through a rezoning process. We made it clear from the get-go that there would be some type of a zone change that's needed for this property for any type of redevelopment. So, I, I'm not really so sure what the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission would be in the, in the redevelopment, in the marketing, and selecting a preferred developer process for a property like this. Paige, I don't know if you want to weigh in anymore?
Just, just generally speaking, sometimes we don't know what we're going to get until we get it. So, it would be difficult to try to figure out how to tweak our zoning accordingly based on Planning and Zoning Commission comments. The first thought I come, that comes to my mind, it's, it's in the city, but I think of Groton Heights. And there's no way we would have ever envisioned that we're going to have an undersea unmanned robotics high-tech company. And actually, they, they did have a committee that studied that for years and years and years and years. And we didn't come close to the use that people had contemplated. So, I think sometimes it's difficult when there's a special situation like the Mystic Education Center to even envision what it might be and respond with planning and zoning input until you get the responses, get the proposals.
Thank you for your comment. So, my, my last question is, um, I, I think, you know, as of right now, we're saying, you know, it's more on the Planning and Zoning, but realistically, this is something that's gone through the process to date, and now the Planning and Zoning has made the final decision. But I just don't think it's fair to put it all on the Planning and Zoning, and they'll be the final on everything. I mean, the town agreed to this 725 to 850 unit process. And my purpose of thinking if Planning and Zoning had come in earlier, I just think that it could be a more sound way of, of bringing them on, onboard a little bit earlier to kind of, this is not a property that was just new to us. This property's been here forever. We knew eventually would be sold. And I feel that we should be more targeted and more advanced in our, our direction and already be thinking ahead to really target that property and its usage. So, when it was, when, when the timing was right, we had an idea and we were more prepared. Thank you.
Counselor Aubrey, did you have another question?
Well, not a question really, just another philosophical thing, I think. I, I hope that, did I use the right word? I, I hope that the people listening tonight have been educated a little bit and, and feel a little differently about it. Personally, I think the process is being done very well. And until you have your suggestions that come in from a developer, there wouldn't be anything to prepare, because you really wouldn't have any idea what they might want. But I think what's important going forward is knowing that the council, the planning and zoning, you know, we take on the responsibilities because we care about Groton and very deeply, or we wouldn't be putting this kind of time into different things that come along. So, I'm just going to ask the people that have opinions about it to be respectful of the people that are involved. I've been, I've just been shocked by some of the emails that I've received. They've been disparaging and, and just rude and callous and uncaring just to try to get their point across, and I think that's really unfortunate. And I hope that we can work together in a little bit more harmony from this point forward and just stop abusing the people that are involved. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bronk and Mr. Reiner. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us this evening on this issue. And I'm sure we will have more questions for you in the future. We're happy to take them in from the public and try to find answers for you as best we can. It is 8:31, and I'm going to call for a five-minute recess before we start in on the next item. And I know Chief Asaro is waiting patiently, and I appreciate that very much. We will, we, we will be back at 8:37, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are back. It is 8:38, wait, 39, I'm late, sorry, guys. 8:39, and we are on to item 2021422, addressing community safety concerns. This was on page 29 in your packet. And we have with us this evening Chief Asaro, and we have, I believe Attorney Callahan is here as well. And this is in response to some concerns, recent concerns, some recent issues that the council would like to discuss a bit. But we would like to hear from our chief public safety official and have our attorney listening in so that they can offer guidance as to how we might solve some problems that we might be having at the current time. So, I will turn this over. Before I do, once again, I would ask if you have questions as the chief is speaking or if Attorney Callahan chooses to speak, please make notes of them. I would like the speakers to be able to finish their thoughts, and then we'll come back and we'll ask questions once they're done with their presentation to us, please. Thank you very much. Chief Asaro or Mr. Burt, did you want to say anything before chief starts?
No, it's okay. You can jump in.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate you being here, and thank you for your waiting.
Thank you, mayor. I hope you can hear me all right. I'm using headphones. My company are great. I know there's been some concerns about some incidents that have occurred in recent weeks. Just to highlight the one that I think that brought everyone's attention to it, was an incident that we had an establishment on Route 12 in Groton where there was a shooting a couple of weeks ago. We're, we're still investigating it, so I'm going to be a bit guarded in what I say about that particular incident. No arrests have been made, but our detectives have the case. They've been working diligently on it. I, I do expect them to build some information in there that will help potentially identify suspects in this case. But, but yes, in fact, there was a firearm discharge, multiple shots fired a couple of weeks ago on a Saturday night, Saturday night before last. Officers from our department happened to be nearby. We've had officers frequent that area regularly, because as, as you recall, a couple of years ago, we had discussions about BYOB ordinance, particularly as it related to one establishment, the Hookah Lounge. Council, time saw fit to enact some legislation that would limit the hours and institute what I think were some very reasonable, reasonable guardrails for, for that establishment and for others in town to continue to allow bring your own beverage type of establishments, but also restrict the hours of operation. I will tell you, we've had some incidents at that, that location from virtually the, the time that it opened until, most recently. The owner has worked with us. The owner's been cooperative and collaborative with the police department. Nonetheless, despite that, there have been some things that have happened. Had a couple of shootings over the last few years. We've also had some disturbances. There has been some other activity our officers have investigated, including actually did activity. There are other places that it's not unique to adjust that one, that one location. There are places, did some analysis, assistance of our records division and, and G D Visslosky, my assistant, we put together some stuff. I have a lot of data, a lot of information that goes back many years. As you know, last year, we, we went with a new computer-aided dispatch records management system. So, there's a, there's a, there's a records management system. So there's a divergent group of information here from our old, our new system. But what I tried to do is isolate it to the Route twelve corridor essentially from I ninety-five south. You know, between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twenty, we had one homicide, or what's categorized as a non-negligent manslaughter. The way it reads, I have to explain and characterize it a little bit. Along that corridor, and they have been some, what would be characterized as kidnapping slash abductions. I don't want to be too alarmist in that. It's categorized that way through the National Incident Page Reporting System. There's been rapes, sexual assaults, other types of violations. We tried to, we tried to get the Class A crimes or Part A crimes categorized. And I can get it put a little bit more, although trying to demonstrate to you the volume of information that I'm working from here. It's a bit disjointed, but there are other places along that area that have had some crimes. As you know, there's several hotels along the Route twelve corridor that, because of its location, right off of I ninety-five between Boston and New York, tracked a variety of different people. There are some less expensive hotels that are frequent. We have had narcotics activity at some of them. But I'd be happy to answer questions. I know, I know I saw one email referencing the Minks Cabaret. There has not been a homicide at that location since November of two thousand and one. And I think I saw a reference in an email about remembering there being a homicide. That was almost twenty years ago. In fact, there was a homicide at that location. I do, I do remember it from when it occurred, but it was, it'll be two decades ago come November. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure what information I can share that would be useful, but I happily, happily share whatever tend to give the customer information they need, and also explain what efforts we've undertaken to try and make sure that we address these problems.
Okay, we have, we have several hands. Just, I would like you just to clarify for the public again. What area of town are you speaking of, sir?
I'm talking about Route twelve corridor. That's kind of the way we isolated it for the purposes of this discussion, which would be Route twelve from the I ninety-five overpass north, essentially the Ledgerd Line.
Thank you. Counselor Obray? You're muted, Counselor Obray? Counsel, there you go.
I'm just wondering, with the hookah lounge, is that what we call it? Whatever. You know what I mean. You know what I'm talking about, which one I'm talking about?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you. It seemed to me that we kind of, well, we had a long discussion, and we tried to make some changes. And at the time, you know, you said that you felt that you and your patrolmen could kind of keep that area in check. And now, I know that's a lot, because there's a lot going on in that area. And I'm not being critical. Please understand that. I'm just trying to ask a question. But who's telling me shut up? Anyway, anyways, I'm wondering what we can do. Do we need to add to what we had discussed before? Or, you know, because that seems to be an ongoing problem.
Yeah, as I recall it, I don't recall the specific statement that our officers could keep under control. I remember the discussions that we had. I voiced concern at the time about an establishment that was operating after hours, that was bringing in patrons that conceivably could have been consuming alcohol in other locations, and coming into the town of Groton after the closing of bars. You know, I found that concerning, concerning at the time, and I think that's what led to some of the discussions that we had then.
Well, I think then perhaps we'll have more discussion certainly as we're talking about this. But I think it would be good for the council to review what we had done in the past, and look into making it so that when a bar closes, the bars in the area close, everything closes, except that, you know, somebody is checking into a hotel or something. We don't have any control over that. But we should have some more control over this establishment, because I don't think it's, I don't think it's good for Groton. I don't think the developer that's going to be coming in behind it is going to be...
Counselor, were you muted yourself mid-sentence?
How I did that?
I don't know. You were, the last thing we heard was the developer coming in behind?
Oh, yes. I mean, the group that we're working with, they're looking at putting a very nice project back there. And I don't think that they're going to have, want to have concerns about what's in front of them. And so I think, I think personally, it's up to us as the council to revisit what we discussed before, and see what else we could do under the guidance of the chief. We want to be helpful. We don't want to be, you know, disrespectful of what you're trying to do, because I know you work hard at what you're trying to do. And I think maybe we need to work together in order to make this situation a whole lot better than it is right now. I know for a fact that we have one of the bars on that strip that has a three hundred dollar room. And for three hundred dollars, you know and I know what's going on. So there's some things that we got to be looking into in that area, because I'm not making that three hundred dollars.
No, I agree. You know, in our offices, there's only so many strategies we can employ from a law enforcement standpoint. I think that the consideration the council made a couple of years ago with an ordinance, looking into that was helpful. You know, there's certainly zoning regulations. I don't profess to be an expert on those, but I can assure you, our officers are paying attention to all these establishments. You know, they have to operate within the bounds of law. So they, you know, there have been times that we've done some surveillance at various locations throughout the town, not just exclusively in this area, where we've been informed of potential problematic activity or potential violations of law. We will continue to do that. Our officers are proactive in their policing approaches. When you're out there on patrol, they're very visible. In fact, the incident that we're referring to now, the first person that was aware of it was the patrol sergeant going over there to check something, and all people running, you know, gunshot calls started coming in through the nine-one-one dispatch center, because some of the neighbors were alarmed, they heard it. So we're implementing those strategies. We are trying to work with the businesses, but, but like I said, this is, this is catering to folks that are coming in after hours that may have already been intoxicated. I recall the conversations we had years ago, two years ago, or whatever, we had conversation about the ordinance. I had even made the comment that sometimes after midnight, not a lot of good things happen. And I had someone approach me after that afterwards, because they were offended by that comment. I didn't say it in an offensive way. I said, that's kind of what we learn in this line of work, that when people have been out all night, and maybe they're not in the best condition, when they've been imbibing for several hours, that sometimes people get a little bit more inclined to get involved in things that maybe you prefer to get. That doesn't mean businesses should be shut down. What that means is controls need to be put in place. And it's not exclusive to one establishment. You know, we've had other locations throughout town. We've had places in Mystic where there's been altercations. That happens. It does happen in this type of environment when you're serving alcohol, or you're catering, catering individuals after alcohol service stopped at other locations. I was also, I do recall part of that is not, not being in a, or not wanting to track from business coming to Groton. And when people bring new businesses in to embrace it, certainly, I certainly endorse that too. But there come some downsides to it when you're talking about different types of establishments. So we are committed, department is committed, our officers are out there, they're the ones that are, you know, engaged in this activity of enforcement on a regular basis. They're the ones that do assume some of the risk when they go out. Certainly when they hear gunshots, that's alarming incident for anybody. Police officer, unlike others, goes towards the sound of the gunfire, it's close away from it. So, you know, our officers are keenly aware of that, and want to make sure that they're doing everything that they can to make sure that Groton's safe, and that these establishments are operating in a way that doesn't, doesn't create problems for the town or the neighbors that are in close proximity to you.
Thank you.
Are you set? Okay, thank you. Counselor Boardlon, you have a...
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Fassaro, for your data and all your input and your efforts and all the officers involved that, you know, do the hard work to keep us safe, you know, throughout Groton. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the data. Is there any other data too, maybe not tonight, but at some point down one eighty-four? I know there's been some like overdose deaths down there, and the motels and stuff. I know there's been some sex trafficking, like you had stated. Between that strip, along with the, you know, Super Eight right there on the highway, location, location, we're in between major casinos, Boston, New York. We are in a very large sexually, sexual trafficking hub, where youth, women and boys, men have been found throughout this area. So I would love to see at some other point in time, maybe some data from down from the one eighty-four quarter. In regards to, you know, the situation at large, I think, yes, I think we, I think this is a great item to look into. I do remember that, that death in two thousand and one, I think it was called Silk Stockings at the time, before it became Minks. My understanding, and I did some more research looking around, you know, that whole strip has some problems, in my opinion. It was only a couple of years ago that, you know, the Minks had up there now hiring graduates of whatever class it was. And I called them and said, you know, this shouldn't be up here. People are in town for graduation. This is not the community that it should represent. It's across the street from a community center. We used to have an elementary school behind there. And with new development coming in on both those properties, close to all these hotels, there are some concerns. So looking at the Minks, I believe there used to be, from what I read, two sides to there. And one is topless, one is completely nude, and one, the drinks stop at a certain time, and the other side stays open to two or three AM with no drinks served. Is that, is that true, Chief Fassaro, that other side operates all night as well?
What I can tell you is it's a regulated establishment. Yes, I believe that's the case. They do comply with all the regulations, meaning that they, every year, they have submitted a permit. That does come across my desk. I know it goes to planning and zoning. And they're, they're punctual with that. So they're in compliance with those regulations that need to be compliant with. You know, specific to your questions as far as the locations, I mean, I have data about the places that you just mentioned, from roughly two, well, beginning of two thousand and eleven to the current date. And I can, you know, the numbers are kind of meaningless. I can tell you how many, how many times we've responded to those locations without cross-referencing them to other materials. If there's specific information, the more specific or refined that you want that data is helpful to me, instead of just saying, hey, we've got X amount of numbers that, you know, we went to the Minks so many times in this decade, and we went to the Super Eight, or to Best Western, or to the Hookah Lounge, or to the location along Route twelve where there's bar wash, and Rosie's Cantina. And, you know, and I don't think any of us intend to try and call out these businesses in a way to embarrass them. I think that we're just facts that say, at these particular locations, there would be calls for service. We also have other businesses. We have, you know, commercial establishments, Walmart, Ole, Opitz, where our officers respond there regularly, multiple times per shift, but maybe not for crimes of violence and related cases, as you indicated, responding for larceny to those places. But depending on what type of information the council wants, we certainly can provide it. But again, I want it to be useful. I don't want to provide meaningless information with just numbers and a list of calls for service and codes. I want to be able to put that in a, in a format that is easily digestible and consumable by council and the public. So you can say, okay, from this, during this period of time, the police department went to this location X amount of times, or these types of, or homicides, suicides, drug overdoses, that sort of stuff. So happy to provide it. We're happy to put it together. I just need to have a good idea of what the council wants as far as that is, and what kind of fidelity you want on that. So it's all, it's public record. We can provide it, and I'd be happy to do so. But guidance I get from the council will be helpful. Make sure I get you what you're looking for.
I guess I would just, yeah, I'd love that. And I guess what I was asking is, is that there is another establishment that stops alcohol at a certain time and is open late. And one has dancers, and one is, I guess, smoking hookahs. So I guess it'd be interesting to look at that, you know, as a comparison of two establishments that are open way past midnight, after people have been drinking and kind of stumble in there. I think this would be a great item to refer to the safety committee. I think to, you know, break it out into a smaller group, more in depth, and report back to the council. Is it possible to make a referral now, Madam Mayor, to the safety committee for this, to look into this referral further?
I would like to give other counselors the opportunity to speak, but perhaps when everyone's had a chance, you could do that. I would like it put in writing, please. And I would like it sent via email to the whole council, and I would like counselors to respond via email that we have the exact language you would like for the referral. I just can do that when you're done.
I can do a verbal motion to refer it to the...
I am asking you to put it in writing, please. That way, we have the exact language for the committee chair. Thank you.
We're not able to verbally do them at the meetings anymore, is what you're saying?
Again, I'm asking you to put it in writing, please. All right. So I had some questions for Attorney Callahan. I'm seeking some guidance from Attorney Callahan, if you're here, sir.
I am here, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for waiting. You know, a few years back, when we, when we worked on the BYOB ordinance, we looked at that as a tool for our public safety officials to be able to protect our community. And, you know, we had consulted you, and you did some research about how it could be crafted to protect the business owners, but also to protect the bigger community. Now we're in a different spot. We're revisiting, and we are finding that there are some issues still. And so I'm sure, as other counselors have, I've been doing some reading about what some other states have done. And I really don't know how what they have done meshes with what is applicable in the state of Connecticut. So that's where I'm counting on you to, to offer some guidance. And you could just say, nope, can't do that in Connecticut, or that might work, whatever. So I know that there are some communities that have just outlawed BYOB altogether, and just said, they've passed an ordinance and said, no BYOB in our town. There are some communities that have said BYOB, but only if the primary means of income is food service, right? Are either of those two things something that has happened in Connecticut? Or does that not apply, given state statutes?
I spent some time looking, following the opinion we had done back in two thousand and eighteen of any more recent developments. And, you know, I can't speak to the laws of other states, but, you know, you can certainly regulate BYOBs in Connecticut, you know, consistent with the state's liquor control laws. So you can't do anything that's permitted by the state laws, but you can be more restrictive. Like, you can change the hours of your BYOB ordinance to be, you know, earlier than midnight, if you wanted to. And maybe that would address some of the concerns there that were raised earlier tonight. You, you know, I did find in West Haven that they have an ordinance that allows for a penalty system. And if there's a certain amount of offenses during a certain time period, the, the permit issued by the city can be revoked for a time period, you know, after an appeal process. You know, I found a lot of towns where there's been discussion, Connecticut towns, where there's been discussion about BYOBs, and, you know, whether or not those towns have granted the ability to have the BYOBs. And it seems like some towns have BYOBs, but don't necessarily even have regulations governing them. So it seems to be kind of... So it seems to be kind of all across the board in Connecticut, and there's unfortunately no state statute that specifies how BYOBs are to be really regulated. It all kind of falls on the municipality. So if there's something specific that you think should be analyzed legally, I, I'm certainly happy to do that and provide my feedback to you on, on whether that can be done.
Thank you. Um, the other thing is when an establishment has a liquor license issued by the state of Connecticut, there are certain, I've never applied for one, so I don't know all the details, but you, you have to have certain training. You have to meet certain requirements as to making sure that, you know, you're carding people and, you know, there's this whole list of requirements that the state requires. Um, could that set of regulations be applied to a BYOB permit?
Yeah, I would, I would have to look at specifically what those require, so I don't want to misspeak, but I, I think you can build some teeth into your ordinance, um, in addition to the stuff you already have in there. Like it does prohibit, your ordinance does prohibit serving intoxicated people, uh, you know, visibly intoxicated people. It, um, prohibits serving underage people. Um, you know, so I can, I can certainly look at what is required under the Liquor Control Act of state licensed establishments and, and try to build those teeth into your ordinance.
May I add something to that, uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, sir.
I, I, I think the difference is when you have a, a regulated establishment under the liquor laws of Connecticut, there's also consequences in that, that they're both fines, uh, potential, you know, uh, civil liabilities, but losing that liquor license is a, a considerable penalty for that establishment that doesn't exist where you have a BYOB location, because they're not selling alcohol, they're not, they're not generating a revenue out of it. So it's, the consequences in one are, are not necessarily equal. And there's, and correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Callahan, but there's a lot more latitude in establishments that are BYOB as opposed to those that are regulated by a liquor control.
Yes, I, I agree with everything you just said.
Okay, so then you could, if the council requested, um, look into the potential of more closely matching the BYOB ordinance to what the state liquor license things are. Um, so that's, that's good to know that that's a possibility. Um, and then just the other question, are there places in Connecticut that have just said no BYOBs?
Um, I, I haven't seen an outright ordinance or regulation that says they're prohibited. Um, you know, I've seen, uh, I, I think it was Mansfield where they wanted to put BYO, or they wanted, I'm sorry, they wanted to put a hookah lounge, so I don't want to, um, misspeak there. But, um, I, I haven't seen um, an outright prohibition. I didn't search every single town, but I, I, I did not come across that. And, um, just to, to comment on something you just said, Madam Mayor, about the ability to build in some of the, you know, the, the requirements of the, the liquor control laws. Um, you know, right now you have an ordinance, and what it says is they get, you know, there's a penalty of two fifty for each violation. Um, but there's nothing to lose, you know, to kind of piggyback on what Chief Fasaro just said, there's, there's no license or anything to lose. So, you know, we would probably want to build some other stuff into your ordinance that, you know, you can, you can seek court relief to enjoin them from continuing violations or um, ma- maybe look into whether it should be set up differently, where there is an actual license from the town. And, um, and how that would work if, you know, similar to West Haven's, if they continue to violate, um, you know, your, your regulation, then there's some consequence to it. That's certainly something I can look into.
Right, thank you. And, and what I was just saying is, of course, an extreme measure, because we have um, several businesses in town, um, very well-known establishments in town that use BYOB. And I'm sure, why shouldn't say I'm sure, I'm pretty sure the chief and public safety have not had to respond there at the same level that we've had in, um, certain other situations. So perhaps, um, you know, we could look at something, uh, with the hours, you know, regulating hours on it or regulating, you know, food service in order to, um, keep it. I also think that the idea of, um, maybe a license, I don't know if you could call it a license or not, but this permit that you give them and having some kind of consequence if there are too many public safety violations um, might be something valuable. And again, these are all just, uh, we're all just kind of throwing out ideas and brainstorming at this point, and I think this does need more consideration. But I think we're hearing from the chief that, um, what's in place right now, um, is not helping them do their job to protect the town. So, I would like to see us explore this further. Counselor Franco.
Thank you. Um, so Chief Fasaro, I don't know if you have the data on this, but with all the BYOBs in our town, are you responding to them as well? Or do this just one establishment seems to pop out, um, more so than any other?
Uh, well, I, I, I take the short answer, the, the, yeah, yeah, without the data.
Clarify.
Okay.
Serious injury or death, pot, potential death issues. I'm not talking like there was a, you know, a little squirmish or, I'm, I'm trying to distinguish where there are serious incidents going on at establishments where you, you probably have to call in numerous jurisdictions to deal with the situation. Other BYOBs, uh, the same as.
The short, the short answer is no. The answer is no. I think we've, um, we have multiple locations throughout the town. Um, most of which, I think all of which serve food, which is, um, you know, certainly with, with, and alcohol is being served, obviously consuming food helps to delay any intoxication or, 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 you know, has an effect on the body, as we all know that. So the answer to that is, is, is no. Uh, we haven't had the frequency with which we've had respond to this particular location. Um, we've had multiple incidents where there's been threatened violence or, um, actual violence that we've had to respond. And, you know, I, I think that, and the answer to your question.
Yes, thank you. And at this location, as it's been discussed, I mean, I brought forward the BYOB ordinance, and I had done all the research, and I understand how the state, there's, there's basically nothing to oversee this. Um, and the state has their hands clean on this one. Um, and my question is, like, um, in a sense, and this is to my counselors, fellow counselors, do we put things in effect to affect all BYOBs that are doing nothing? Or do we look at an establishment and try and figure out, have this one establishment is potentially going to have somebody die at it? To the point where that's going to be what it takes to close it? Or what can we do ahead of time for this one establishment to stop it? Can we distinguish this one establishment? I'm wondering, are there any town licenses that an establishment has to apply for when they come and do business in Broughton? Can we revoke that license to do business in Broughton? Um, and if, I mean, if, I mean, if the state has sort of guidelines as to how they can revoke your license, then maybe the town should have all, an ordinance on how to revoke a license of a business who is just having multiple issues. Um, potentially like very serious issues. And this might go into effect, um, when you look at other businesses that are in the Route twelve corridor there. Um, that are having things like you're, you're mentioning, abductions and kidnappings and rapes and assaults. They probably have some kind of license to do business in the town of Broughton. So I don't think the BYOB, in my personal opinion, is the right route. Because even if we pull back on the hours, this is an after-bar closing place. So the bars close, and that's when people are showing up at this place. And we can't say you have to close early, because then we would have to tell just about every other business in town, whether you're getting gas or a convenience store or a drive-through fast food place, you also have to close early as well, because this one business has a problem. Um, that's probably something that is more of an Attorney Callahan question and something to look at. Um.
Your time is up, Counselor Franco. We can come back.
Can he answer my question? Thank you.
Attorney Callahan?
You can start if it, if I can start if it helps.
Sure.
When, when a, when a, an incident happens at a location, um, let's say, for instance, it happens at a bar that's regulated by the state. We do liquor referrals. If, for instance, someone leaves there, they're intoxicated, and, uh, they get into a traffic accident, we do a liquor referral on the bar. And there's a mechanism for that to be adjudicated through the state, um, regulatory agency. Um, you know, if, if there is some kind of criminal culpability from people involved, uh, you know, we can look into that, we can investigate it. In this particular case, with establishments that aren't regulated, it's very difficult. There really isn't any tools at our disposal. I know when I've come before the council in the past, uh, noise ordinances, things of that nature, there are, there are laws on the books that we can enforce that we utilize to the extent, um, we can. And, and it's, and it's, and it goes through uh, the Superior Court, it goes through, uh, the court in London, and there, there are violations and fines, and there's ways that we can enforce that more so than we can do with establishments that really have very little regulation, um, hours of operation. I, I heard the mayor talk about those seem to be viable, um, options. But again, I, I just want to highlight, I, I, I think it's important to say this. We've worked with the establishment. As I said, some of our, um, some of the, the folks at the police departments and our supervisors gone and met with the owner have, uh, you know, been, been, he's been very accommodating when it comes to utilizing some of the technology they have there for us to investigate incidents. They have, um, in, in many ways, been accommodating to the department. They have security guards, but, you know, it, I hear it time and time again from our officers, that they're, they're signed on the door, don't bring weapons in, don't bring knives in, bring firearms in. Um, I, I don't know what the, the law enforcement response is for something where we're, we're, we know there's a problem, uh, there continues to be a problem. Uh, there has to be other solutions, and I don't know that it's exclusively a law enforcement question. There's probably some other options that need to be explored, and I think that's why you're trying to have this conversation tonight. And, and, and I can say on behalf of the department, we appreciate it, because after all, you know, we've fawning to incidents at this and other locations, uh, and will continue to do so. That's our job, but, uh, whatever, whatever options or, or, um, ideas there are out there, we'd certainly, uh, certainly cooperate with making them come to fruition if it's in the betterment of public.
Attorney Callahan, did you wish to respond?
Yeah, um, I, I do briefly, I, and, um, I, I understand what you're saying, Counselor Franco, that maybe BYOB is not the best or the only way to address this. And, um, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll certainly commit to exploring other avenues within, you know, the town regulation to see if there's a, another way to tackle this problem, and, um, I can follow up with you on that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. Um, so I would ask, um, Counselor Bordelain, if you would, at the end of the meeting, um, write up an email and address it to your fellow counselors, um, requesting a referral, and I'm, I feel confident you would get support, but we do need the exact language from you, please. So that's why I'm asking for it in writing.
Yeah, thank you. I sent the email.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, Mr. Bird, did you want to wrap anything up on this particular issue? If not, we'll go on on the agenda?
No, nothing for me.
Thank you very much, Chief Fasaro and, um, Attorney Callahan for being with us this evening. It's an important issue, and I know uh, the members of the community are, are listening and, um, hoping for good outcomes. Have a good night.
And thank you. Thank you for the support.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to twenty twenty forty-one five, short-term rental discussion. Um, this began on page thirty in your agenda packet, and Mr. Reiner is back um, to talk to us about this. And, um, I believe that, um, you provided a draft for the full council. Uh, we've had discussions about this before. We've met with, um, people have, having concerns about short-term rentals. We've met with people who let their homes for short-term rentals. So we've had lots of discussion, we've had good background, and we asked town staff to come up with something for us, and tonight's our night to take a look at it. And then Mr. Reiner and Mr. Bird are, um, looking for feedback on what they've provided so far. So, um, Mr. Bird, did you want to start or just go straight to Mr. Reiner?
I can go straight to Mr. Reiner.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reiner, you have the floor, sir. Thank you for waiting.
Yes, of course. Uh, good evening, everyone, again. So we put together a, a very rough draft of a short-term rental ordinance, trying to hit upon some of the topic areas that we had discussed. Sorry, it was a number of months ago, just, uh, working on a lot of items, so it took a little time to get us to this point, but really focusing on a registration system for the operation of short-term rentals in Broughton. Uh, some type of annual registration fee to cost, to cover the cost of the regulation, um, as well as inclusion of local contacts, annual safety inspections. And then I'd had a list of other topics I wanted to cover. The ordinance, I did quickly run it by the town attorney, but I did not have him do a deep dive into it, because again, rough draft, I didn't want to, uh, take his time if there were major changes the council had in there. But there were a number, I think even some questions that I had put in the sidebar of that ordinance for the council to consider, such as, do we want to rent out, allow people to rent out their accessory apartments, which I think, why not? But it's something I wanted to kind of put on the radar. Uh, are short-term rentals allowed in any particular zoning district in town? Or do we want to allow them by right and not regulate them in business districts? But are we looking to really regulate this more in our residential districts in town? Uh, any exemptions? And the number of, uh, short-term rentals that people can have in town? And then what should the penalty be for any type of violation? So just throwing those few things out there, and I got my pen and pad ready for more notes and suggestions, and I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Um, I had sent, um, some feedback to you and the manager on this, but I'll just briefly um, voice them for the rest of the council and the public to hear. Um, at the very beginning, I was in agreement that, um, a statement talking about the ability to, to balance the rights of the neighbors with the family homeowners to find a way to try to preserve their family home, as we found in Noank, there were some residents there that were using the short-term rental to keep their house and their family. I think that's important. Um, as to the enforcement, I had a question as to, uh, who would the designator enforcer be? Would this fall on the police, or would this be something that was a, um, part-time zoning enforcement officer that would be available in the evenings and the weekends? And we've had this conversation, I think, during budget time as well. Um, the rationale for not limiting the number of short-term rental units. I was questioning that, and my thought goes to places like downtown Mystic, where you have not an individual property owner trying to save their family home, but you have corporations coming in, buying up properties and renting them out. Is there anything we can do to kind of limit that situation to protect the neighborhood? Um, the amount of a fee or a license, if you will, to, to enroll, uh, short-term rental? Um, I'm wondering if you had any comparables, uh, for other towns or, you know, I'm not sure what's in Connecticut as far as this is going. Um, response time in section four, you have it at two hours. I'd like to see that drop to one. Two hours is a long time to deal with lots of nonsense going on next door to your house. Um, I liked the idea of the emergency packet with all the information in there. I was going to ask you about the accessory structures as well. And my question also was, would boats be included as an accessory structure if somebody wanted to, um, short-term rent their boat? And I think I heard about someone in. short-term rent their boat? And I think I heard about someone in town doing that, actually. And the fines for it, again, are there comparables as to what what you found in your research? What would be comparable fines and how would they be enforced? One more thing, I noticed Mr. Dunn is with us. Mr. Dunn has done a lot of work on this in Noank. And I know they've had their share of discussion in Noank about this issue. He had sent with us our prior discussions a company that you can contract with that would monitor and take care of all the enforcement things. And I was just wondering if we knew the cost of that and if we could find a way. If we are going to do some kind of registration, some kind of fee, can we make the fees offset the cost of having this entity that would do the registration and take care of all of that? That's a lot, and I had nine seconds left, but I'll shut up now. Thank you. All right.
Can't hear you, John.
It would probably help if I unmuted. Thank you very much. On the enforcement end, I would love the chief to take care of it, but I imagine it's going to be some type of a joint police and part-time zoning enforcement officer, because when are we going to get these types of complaints? It's going to be nights, it's going to be weekends, and I see that as probably an additional part-time staff or something along those lines. I think, but I'm not entirely sure about that yet. I think it all depends because right now, these are operating in town. And we're not really dealing with a lot of complaints. I think us regulating this will probably even clamp down on that a little bit more, but I'm not 100% sure. I think I can also reach out to some other municipalities to see what they're doing. Limit the corporation. So that's one of the tricky things that I don't know how effective we would be in doing, and I want to kind of talk to legal counsel about this is, yeah, it it sounds great to say, are we going to limit someone from having too many short-term rentals? But if it's Corporation A, and then it's Corporation B, and it's Corporation C, and it's all held by the same person or entity, I don't know how much we can really regulate that. So I think that's a town attorney question. So and I'm writing my own notes here, too. I don't have any comparable short-term rental fees or fines yet. Let me do a little more digging into that. The response time of two hours, yeah, we can certainly drop that down to one. I want to make sure that we also don't make it unreasonable either. Because an hour goes by quick. I'm sure sometimes your students taking a test think an hour doesn't go by long enough. But when something is going difficult and you're managing those types of of things, an hour could be a pretty short period of time. So I think that's something we can certainly look at. I hadn't thought about the accessory structures as it relates to boats or even RVs on the on your property, which are there more for storage purposes, not as an additional accessory dwelling unit. So I think if someone wants to rent their boat that is stored in their yard, I think I would make a recommendation, we probably want to prohibit that. Because that boat or RV is not necessarily listed or permitted as an accessory dwelling unit per zoning. But if somebody wanted to short-term rental their boat, that's a houseboat in a marina, I don't even know if we can regulate that. I'd have to check into that one a little bit. And I think that was covers all your questions. And I have also been in communications with Mr. Dunn probably once a week about this topic or another one. So he and I are in constant communication. He's been very helpful on this. So I do want to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Thank you also, Mr. Dunn. And I should note that Mayor Hedrick is with us this evening also as the city is also dealing with this issue. And he was here to listen in to see what we were doing. And I thank you both gentlemen for joining us this evening. Appreciate that. Counselor Franco.
Thank you. I am after reviewing this, I'm I'm hearing that you're saying the attorney took a quick review of it. And I am concerned about homeowners' rights and and how the rules would apply or are supposed to apply to long-term rentals and as well as property owners. Because you can't, from what I was told when this first came forward from the attorneys was, if I believe I'm correct, you can't make rules that wouldn't apply to all. And is that correct?
Yeah, so one of the things that if it's in zoning, that's where it would only apply to new people. If it's in an ordinance, we can make rules that can apply to all. And I think we can differentiate on the short-term versus a long-term rental. And there was a number in there of 21 days, maybe the right number is 30 days. I think that's how a lot of places do define short-term rentals, but I wasn't sure what number to pick. I'd taken that from another municipality. So I think we can refine that piece more working with the town attorney of how do we differentiate between long-term and a short-term rental.
Or even just your home, because I believe when it says here that locations of off-street parking have to be notated. London to go forward because they would have had to have all of their rentals as off-street parking. So they there were issues there. So that's something that would have to apply to everybody. So off-street parking is probably a red flag for me.
Yep.
I like the fire in the building and the safety aspect of it. I like the the permitting and applications and having people information on at our town and with the police department in case there's an issue that they have to call the owners. There's a I was sort of not sure if somebody having a response within the two-hour that sort of worries me that you're going to have to make sure that's on other places as well. I do not want to limit the number of short-term rentals somebody can own. I think corporations that own in the accounting world, anytime you have a business of any, like, to protect your personal assets, you want to create an LLC and you want to put your property into a business. So that if something happens and you're sued, you have an LLC and they're not coming after you personally. So there's there's reasons why that's set up that way that go beyond just because it's it's a personal liability protection on why some people are doing this. I also think Harborview would probably be an LLC and a corporation, and they have multiple buildings. And I think they run a very reputable Airbnb. And I don't think we should try and prevent other people from coming into our town and do those type of situations. There was the the trash on Lappy stored in public view except with the proper containers and such a I mean, are we expecting this from everybody in our that's long-term rental as well as homeowners? The restrictions of the use, it goes into weddings, which they do have at Harborview. Receptions, bachelorette parties, banquet, concerts, fundraisers, sponsored events, corporation party retreat or other special events. Are we going to tell people that have long-term rentals and also homeowners that they can't do these as well? I mean, because that's what I was told by the attorney, that if you're going to put something in place, you have to be able to do that for other people as well. And I find that to be something that's going to be very restrictive, that you cannot enforce in other places.
And your time is up, Counselor Franco. Counselor Bordelone.
If Counselor Franco wanted to take her second turn before me, that's fine, since she was in mid-sentence. I don't mind waiting because I know it's when she get going, she's got her notes, so I'm willing to wait.
You're willing to wait? Yes, yes. Counselor Franco, would you like to continue? Now Counselor Bordelone is going to yield to return to you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So the restrictions on use, I think that needs to be looked at very carefully. And once again, also the section five on parking, off-street spaces, I think that's an issue. The noise and nuisance, it says here, quiet hours shall be observed between nine and nine and eight AM. Are we going to expect this from other people in rentals in our town as well? I think that's something that can be enforced. It's not even an ordinance in our town. I mean, I understand if a property owner wants to impose that themselves as their own rule, that's okay. But I don't think it should be imposed as an ordinance. I do not have a problem allowing the section 10, the dwellings, the principal residential dwelling, like having the accessory structures. I think if you have an in-law apartment on your property, that's probably what you're going to be renting and living in your own home. And I I think that should be removed and and then I have and that because basically, I think in section five, the miscellaneous provisions where it states the applicant fails to demonstrate the ability of the dwelling to comply with applicable zoning, building, fire, health, and department requirements and other applicable laws. I think that basically is a lot of the laws of our our community, and that's what they need to abide by and and not create other things that are going to be problematic, like you can't make noise after nine o'clock. But I would also like to hear what the town attorney has to say on those because there was serious homeowner rights issues and violations of those that could become a problem. And also, when you talk about boats, some people actually have docks right on their own property and could have a boat docked right there. Which I believe Harborview is also going to have a boat there and rent out a houseboat. So I I would, for somebody who's contributing to our community in such a great way, I would like to make sure that we are being fair. And I understand the community and what their concerns are. But I think the first step, my personal opinion, is to do the application and have an application process and have a safety issue with the fire, you know, department checking out and and I think we're going to get into a lot of problems if we start doing nine PM quiet time. And the police being called because they have to be quiet at nine, but I can't, your next-door neighbor can be having a raging party with no ordinance. So thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Bordelone?
Yep, thank you. Um, no, I just wanted to thank the town for putting this together. And Larry Dunn and Mayor Grentowski, I serve with her on this committee. And it's great to see something kind of start, kind of come into writing and be in the first step. So thanks for that. I had some of the same same concerns I won't repeat. I do think that it's important to have something in place. I think it's a starting point, at least having a place that they're registered. That way, you know, if there ever was a fire at the structure, then people know that that is operating as a short-term rental, that there might not be people in there, or there could be. I think it's important, you know, in the town for safety. I also think after the pandemic, I think it's important to kind of know, making sure that there's information on our town and our rules at these establishments. So people know that, you know, we were still in a mask phase and requirements. I do have concerns with major corporations coming in and buying up, you know, what were normal neighborhoods at one time and five and six dwellings that were single-family structures. Now people are living in like a transient community. So I do have concerns with that in regards to some of the things that were already said, occupancy at 12. I was looking at another order ordinance, you know, we could say 12, but you can define it differently. I mean, I know a family that has 10 kids, you know, and you know, some people rent these types of places because they don't want to put multiple kids in different rooms in a hotel, or they can't find a suite. So I guess, I don't know, it depends on how that's defined. I think the nine o'clock time, as was already stated, could be kind of tough. I sit outside and have a fire till 10 on a weeknight sometime. And nobody complains, but I guess it defines what's quiet, what is what is noise, the crackling of a fire, the smell of smoke? I mean, I agree that that could be hard to enforce if not everybody is has to abide by those at their own dwelling. So just I I'd be interested to see some of this language kind of looked at a little bit more in detail. I think that maybe it possibly maybe takes, maybe we could take some time and maybe kind of have another meeting as well and kind of maybe send more suggestions or have another time to break this apart a little bit, maybe in a more group setting and see what sections versus sending you a bunch of ideas and having you come back and say no and more. I don't know if there's a chance to maybe have this in a little bit of a workshop where we could kind of address some of the the bigger highlights. But I think we're on the right track. I think the parking thing is could be hard. And, you know, the signage, I think, is important. Like I said, the registration, the safety aspect, the fire control aspect. And I I think it's a great start, but I think there's some things that we might want to look at. And I agree that, you know, we can't expect visitors to hold the one rule, but the neighbor next door to be at a different one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Heath?
Thank you. So I had a question about, I mean, basically, it looks like you've just you've turned to find different kinds of fees and stuff like that. But I don't know what those fees are. And how does that relate to a hotel, for example? Because these are businesses, just like a hotel. And full disclosure, I work for a hotel. But how is it, you know, if someone's coming in from out of town, they should be able to expect the same level of safety and also contribute the same amount through taxes or fees that you would if you were staying at a hotel. And not, you know, I am not saying it should be fair to the hotel. I'm saying it should be fair to the town. Because I know that if you stay at a hotel, you pay a 15% occupancy tax. Or it's, I think it's 15%. I should know this, but I've only been back for a month. And is there something like that at the state level or the local level, rather, where we can obtain some sort of tax revenue or the fees that will be commiserate? That makes sense.
I believe they're actually, in the state of Connecticut now, through its Department of Revenue Services, does impose a 15% occupant tax on residential rentals of less than 30 days. I think that was something that was passed back in oh, 2019. So that's something the state does collect. You know, one of the other things I I think is a big distinction or determining factor with some of this is, you know, Counselor Franco was talking about Harborview. And that property is actually a commercially zoned property. And that's where, you know, earlier I'd said, you know, do we want to look at this? It's zoned, actually working waterfront. I think we really want to be looking at this more in our residentially zoned districts. Because I I think all the the points you made as related to Harborview were spot on. We don't want to limit those types of activities in a commercial zone. I think it's more the conflict is happening in the residential zones. I think, you know, Counselor Heath, some of the the same questions of, you know, the hotels, what are the rules that they're playing by? In a sense, these these have turned into quasi-hotels, but I can think of, you know, many beach communities for the longest time or mountain communities have often done weekly rentals of homes. It just wasn't so easily accessible in an online format that we now can all do it without dealing with the a person, an adult person now, it's the software of, you know, Airbnb or VRBO or whatever, you know, apartments.com, so those types of venues. So I think some of that different district might help resolve some of the the questions or problems that are there as well as as we start regulating something, when someone is doing something outside of the norm, we can have additional standards on top of it. So I, you know, again, I'll I'll lean on the town attorneys, but could we require additional things on people? We certainly could. Some of what's in this ordinance draft right now is I wanted to get some feedback. Is it too far or is it not far enough? Or is it just, you know, a little Goldilocks here? Is it too hot? Is it too cold? Or is it just right? I'm getting some feedback that some of these things here are a little bit too far. And that's totally fine. And this is the type of feedback that I'm looking for to help refine this ordinance as we move it on. So thank you.
Okay, great. And then I have a follow-on. You have a question here. Can a person or entity have more than one STR in Groton? And to your point, there have always been rentals, you know, I stayed in one in Miss Squamiket. Rented for a week at a time. And would you want to limit the number that a person could own or a company could own? Or say that they have to be, they have to reside in Groton? Is I I don't know, can a person own an entity? You're 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 asking in our packet that you need consensus for from us on this question. And I'm not sure where to go with that one.
I I think I've already gotten some feedback that, one, I think it's difficult, if not impossible, for us to regulate. And I think I've already heard some general consensus that, you know, from the few that have spoken, that And I think I've already heard some general consensus that, um, you know, from the few that have spoken, that maybe we don't want to limit it. Although there is a concern about corporations coming in and buying up too many of these units. So it's, I, I think hearing already just, um, things are, there's concerns, there's a little bit of division there, but it's also, um, what's the best way of, um, of addressing this one?
Well, how about, uh, here's a question or suggestion. Can it be a maximum of say 10% of the housing on any given street or in any given neighborhood? Because we don't want our neighborhoods to be ghost towns and become basically, um, devoid of, of people living there, right? Uh, so is there a way to limit the number across the town as a whole?
Yeah, um, I, and I think that's one of the concerns of why, you know, the town wants to regulate it as well as many other municipalities of, you start seeing homes that before were supplying year-round housing and they turn into rentals and how does that impact things? Uh, I mean, uh, into short-term rentals, so then no one can live there year-round. Um, I, I've heard those questions being brought up about areas like, uh, in Groton prior to short-term rentals really becoming a thing. You know, five, seven years ago, um, and I think it's only getting worse and you see it happening in more and more communities.
Right. And then you've defined in here what it is to be a, let's see, a non-hosted rental. Can you require people to actually reside at the home, say nine months out of the year or three months or something like that is, is that a possibility?
You know, I think it all depends on how restrictive you want to be. So some of these I, I put in there for discussion purposes to get some, some push-pull. None of these are, I just want to remind everybody, please don't kill the messenger. Some of these I really wanted to get, what, you know, John, what were you thinking? Why did you put this in here? Great. Then we won't put it in there because I didn't want to not address it. And then, hey, why didn't you address that? We only want this to be this type of housing. So, you know, there are some communities where, um, I, I look at, you know, Narragansett, Rhode Island historically was always the, there's a lot of housing that was used in the school year from September till the end of May was college kids. And then in the summertime, it was rented. It was never occupied by, um, really the landlord, the owner would very seldom live there or would only live there for the summer and they would get the income from the college students. I think we've seen a lot of that type of housing turnover. I know in that community to year-round housing. And now we're seeing this other transition over from even the year-round housing, switching to the short-term rentals in communities like Groton that, you know, there's a beach, a waterfront. It's becoming more of a destination year-round for people to want to visit. So a, a, again, how do you want to address it?
That's, okay, thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Heed. Counselor Baumgartner, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, um, thank you, John, for, um, your very in-depth presentation. Learned a lot so far this evening on this important issue. Know, um, a lot of folks in town have been working on this for some time, uh, and also appreciate their efforts, um, not just obviously within, uh, the town of Groton, but, uh, our, uh, some of our, uh, other communities that have their own, uh, zoning, um, jurisdictions as well. So, um, my question is, um, obviously you presented an ordinance and, um, just, uh, you, you may have covered this already, um, in the past, but, uh, what are some of the distinct advantages of going in the direction of regulating, uh, the ordinance as opposed to, uh, uh, regulating through, uh, zoning? Um, or, you know, zoning regulations?
Yeah, sure. So if we do it on our zoning, every short-term rental that is existing right now, unless they change or expand, would be grandfathered. They'd be exempt from the zoning regulations, whereas an ordinance would cover all of those, um, short-term rentals that exist now and that are in the future.
So in the case, if we were to go in the direction of an ordinance, uh, would it then, uh, also have jurisdiction uh, over those specific zoning jurisdictions that, um, say, for example, in Noank where they have their own, um, zoning board? Would the town ordinance supersede, uh, their, or, um, their regulations? Therefore, uh, the town would have, um, the ability to enforce, say, uh, if we were to go in the direction of, of using law enforcement to enforce, um, you know, whatever regulations we put in place as opposed to our own, and a zoning official, uh, would that, you know, uh, would that enforcement sort of supersede, uh, or, you know, uh, does that make sense, John?
Yeah. So I, I think the simple answer is if, if we wanted to, I, I think you're using it just as an example, but, um, I think right now the path we are taking is that this would apply within the town, but not necessarily within Noank. Or I don't know what we're going to do with Groton, Long Point and probably not the city. But I think that is a cooperative decision between the council, the city council, the folks at Groton, Long Point, the folks at Noank of how it applies to those other jurisdictions within the town. To bring it, say, to the town level, if we adopted an ordinance, we would look at, okay, well, we could specify in there. This only applies in residentially zoned districts, if that's the, the mechanism that we wanted to, uh, embrace that. Cause I'm actually not, I'm not entirely sure how other municipalities have addressed this. Or maybe in their definitions, they've just, you know, it talks about the short-term rental of a single-family residential type structure as opposed to something that is a little bit different, um, in some of those business districts. But then again, what about we have numerous residential homes in industrial districts and other districts in town? So it still requires a little bit of, uh, a deeper review, a deeper dive on that. Does that help answer your question?
Uh, ye- yes, it does. Uh, now, in the case, I, I know, um, Counselor Heed had brought up, uh, you know, the fact that there are, in some cases, some companies that have, you know, um, amassed several properties over the last few years. Now, how does this ordinance or drafted ordinance, uh, uh, affect, affect those who may have just one property? Say the property they reside in or they call their primary residence, say in the summers, um, they rent out that, or rent out that property through Airbnb for a few months. You know, obviously that person, uh, is very different than, you know, the company that, you know, continue, or a company that continues to, uh, procure several properties and, you know, uh, say downtown Mystic. Um, so how would you direct differentiate between those two parties? Uh, through, through the, this draft ordinance?
Yeah, I, I, I think some of that is really a policy, uh, decision that I'm looking for from the council of, do we want to limit this to people who primarily own their homes and can only, they can rent it out for a few months out of the year? Or is it, it can be a year-round rental, uh, it can be, you know, somebody can do a nine-month rental and then short-term rentals that you never have to live in there. I'm looking for that direction from the council. So I, I think it, it's almost, it's, it's tough to say, how does this ordinance, because it, it's still, there's a very rough draft. It's how do you as a council want to address that issue? Do we want to get into that, uh, deep of a dive of, of regulating this issue? Or do we want to, I, I, I think the sense of the council initially was, let's create a registration system, get those safety checks, make sure there's contact information, you know, the two-hour callback time, whatever it is. Get that structured in place, understand how many of these we have in town right now, which is around 200 or so short-term rentals. Um, that can be active at any point in time. And then see how big of a problem it is. Do we need to, um, tighten up a little bit more on how we regulate it?
See, and that, that's where I think, um, and if we can get an ordinance that addresses those issues, I, I think that from what I've heard, or at least some of the correspondence we've received in the past, that's where a lot of concern, residents have brought up concerns that they're looking to that or to at least have that level of detail. Um, and, um, and that's where I know in just some of the research I had done, um, with, you know, existing with, going the direction of regulating through, uh, zoning, uh, it can get to that. So say if someone rents more than, uh, or, you know, uh, if someone owns a property and they rent it out for more than 30 days, then, um, that in some municipalities, for example, uh, then the approval for that short-term rental would be subjected to, uh, the zoning board and they would have to, uh, or zoning, uh, commission and they would need, say, a, um, a special permit, uh, whereas.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Okay, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'll, I'll yield my time and I'll, uh, come back to, if, if you just want to address that quickly and then, um, I think about it.
Yeah, I thi- I think, you know, as it gets into rentals, I don't know if we, uh, again, do we really want to, just as we don't regulate the ownership of property, whether, you know, uh, it's a, it's a home or it's a condo. I don't know if we want to get into, all right, if, if something's a long-term rental, I think historically that hasn't really been a problem. That hasn't been something we wanted to regulate. So I think beyond 30 days, I'm not sure why we would need to kick that over to the zoning commission for something like a special permit or something along those lines. Um, I think instead it might just be, okay, it's a, it's a long-term rental. It's a house. It was approved as a house. It's being used as, um, um, as a residential dwelling. You know, it's really the question of how much turnover and are, you know, are people being safe? Is the character, um, and I think the expectation of the neighborhood being held. I, I think that those are some of the, the things that we're looking for.
Thank you. Are there other first-time hands before we go to second-time speakers? Um, I know Counselor Melendez indicated he's having some difficulty, uh, with his connection this evening. So, um, if you wish to speak, just, um, you can message or something, let me know and we can recognize you, Counselor Melendez. All right, seeing none, um, Counselor Boardlon, your second term, please?
Yep, thank you. Um, again, I just think like, I just don't want to, uh, like undercut our local businesses and hotels and infrastructures here that, you know, do pay their fair share and, and, and produce. Also, I just, uh, don't want to dampen the market in the sense where folks that are coming in to purchase, to live here, to invest and be part of the community long-term, um, are, you know, competing with these mega corporations that are dropping money on a, on a fly that can pick up five and six buildings in one clip that the average person can't. And it makes it very competitive for the average buyer, which, you know, we want to attract families and people who are invested in our town long-term. So, uh, th- those are my disadvantages of like allowing the big corporations to come in. Also, I think long-term versus short-term, when you have long-term, you have more people invested, right? Because they're here a little bit longer. And when you have the quick turnover, a couple of days here, a week there, this, you know, um, you have, you can, you can raise a little bit more racket because you're going to be out of there in two days or five days. And so I can see where you might have a tighter restriction on something like that versus maybe a long-term. So, I mean, I really just think it depends, but overall I think it's great. And I think, you know, if you own your property, I think you should be able to rent it out. And I, I just think there should be some guidance and I think we should try to, you know, encourage, uh, limiting, uh, large corporations from just, you know, changing our, our, our infrastructure and, and, and creating a business, uh, drift or community or blocks versus a residential. And, um, but I, I think, you know, owner occupied, um, you know, or long-term, um, you know, it, there's a lot of different ways. And I think we have a lot to discuss here. Uh, thank you.
All right. So Mr. Reiner and Mr. Burt, do you have what you need from the council? You have some direction from us this evening? And then we'll be hearing back from you again, I assume. Yes?
Yes.
You're good? Okay, very good. Thank you. So we are on to, just in the nick of time, 2021 1414, land acquisition review and approval of purchase and sales agreement for Wolf Brook property. This is on page 37 and I think, huh, Counselor Parker, you read, you did the, uh, other ordinance. I think this is Counselor Franco.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager to sign the purchase and sales agreement and authorize the town manager to sign all necessary documents to close on the Wolf Brook, Wolf Brook property. I assume.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Mr. Reiner, did you want to give us, um, quick update or give the public a quick update? You're muted, sir?
That's the second time I've done that tonight. I'm sorry. Rookie mistake. I think this is the first time we've really spoken about this property in a lot of detail in public session. So I'll give kind of a, a brief overview and then talk a little bit about where things are. So this is the 161-acre Wolf Brook, Wolf Brook property. Uh, it's located at Zero Noank Ledyard Road. This is a piece of property that was proposed for development a couple of times, uh, over the past number of years. It did get, uh, an Army Corps of Engineers approval a number of years back, which, um, then nothing was really followed up on that, uh, development. So there are some options for other development scenarios on the property. It is a very high-quality property from, uh, wetlands, habitat, uh, vernal pools on the property, uh, as well as this property is rich in, um, artifacts from the English retrieved from the Battle of Mystic Fort and counterattack in 1637. Actually pretty significant from a historical perspective. So a little bit of background on the property. Uh, we applied for a Connecticut deep grant back in 2020 and received a grant for $352,000 towards the purchase price of this property. So the appraised value of the property is $880,000. Uh, working with the property owners, they are willing to sell the property to us for $800,000, so a little bit below the appraised value. We have also been working with the Groton Open Space Association and they have agreed to contribute up to $210,000 towards the, towards the purchase price of this property. They are not looking for any ownership, um, stake in the land. They are looking for us to work with them in the future management of the land, how trails are cut, uh, habitat preservation, removal of any invasive species on the property. And they also want to be involved and consulted, uh, if there was going to be any sale or transfer of the properties. That was, you know, one of the concerns that they had, but I think more, they did want to be involved in the management, but not looking for an ownership interest. Uh, town staff is also looking at other grants and working with the state. Uh, there's another grant that we've been talking about, a NACA grant that we're looking to apply for. Uh, there's a quick turnaround time on that one. So I think you'll be hearing more about that in the near future. That one, we'd be looking for a few hundred thousand dollars on. If we do receive additional grant funding, we would be, um, looking to reduce the contribution of both the town's cash as well as, uh, from GOSA, um, in a proportionate share so that this would be fair to everybody. And if we don't get those other grants, there is a little bit of a, a gap in the funding that we are, uh, working with GOSA and others to try to do some fundraising for the remaining portion of the acquisition price as well as some future funding for stewardship of the property. So what you have before you, so that's kind of the background, the price, where the money's coming from. And what you have before you is a draft purchase and sales agreement. Uh, I've been working on this with the town attorney for some time now. The, um, the seller of the property has reviewed it. We did catch a couple of little minor typos in it after we sent it to the council. I think buyer and seller is mixed up in one spot and there's, uh, something else, but all very minor. But, uh, we're taking this before you tonight to recommend a real, uh, resolution authorizing the manager to sign the purchase and sales agreement as well as authorizing the manager to sign all necessary documents to close on the property. Once we get this purchase and sales agreement signed, we would then begin our real due diligence, such as doing title work. Um, the property already has an A2 survey completed. Deep is part of the grant process. It's going to want to review that A2 survey. And we'd work with them to make sure there might be some additional work we have to do on that. Anytime, uh, I buy open space, I want to do a phase one environmental assessment, just so we're aware of what we're getting in case there's any, uh, issues and any other background work that we have to do. In case I didn't say this, this land would be restricted to open space and paths of recreation uses in the future per that deep grant. If we get that NACA grant, we, there'd be the same type of restrictions. And I think the conservation easement for the property, which is going to be developed in conjunction with deep as well as, you know, we'd look to GOSA and the council for some input on that, uh, would really be specific, the specific document that limits the first, future uses and/or future development on the property. So that's my spiel and happy to answer any additional questions on this acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Counselors have questions on this? Counselors have questions on this item? Councillor Franco.
Thank you. I did send a question in regarding the use of the property with the grants. You had, the response was that under deep grant that we have, what was it that?
It would be limited to open space and/or passive recreation as opposed to active recreation.
What's the distinguishing factors between passive and active recreation?
Active is usually looked at more as our ball fields, our organized sports. You know, I don't see any soccer fields, baseball fields, football fields, lacrosse fields. I don't see any playgrounds being built on this property. I think the expectation is there'll be trails. Now, those trails could be used potentially for hiking, running, horseback riding, possibly, you know, mountain biking, things along those lines, similar to what you'd see, you know, some of the trails at Bluff Point or Haley Farm or, you know, the Merritt property, some of those areas. The Sheep Farm, same thing. There's, you know, walking trails, maybe some interpretive signage, pointing out some of the habitat areas and talking about the property, but not something of what I would call active organized sports.
And GOSA is not staking any kind of claim to the property with the partnership for purchase?
Nope. Their only interest is to be involved in the management of the property. They're not looking for an ownership interest in the property. One other thing I should mention as far as uses is we would reserve some rights such as in that conservation easement, such as the removal of invasive species on the property. And also, we would be looking to construct some type of a parking area somewhere on the site. So that construction of and development of a parking area would also fall into that realm of passive recreation-type uses.
All right. So with the passive, I question you this. Would disc golf fall under passive?
I knew you were going to ask that. I just, I had a feeling, you know, I don't know. I, to me, that seemed like a passive recreation use. I think we'll have to negotiate that a little bit with, with deep. But I'm, I can't tell you with a hundred percent certainty right now if that's a active or passive. That seems a little more passive, but I think it's kind of falls somewhere in that gray.
Right. Because I did research that today and it said passive recreation was, I mean, active recreation is a field. And I don't know if disc golf, what is that? I don't even know what that's called. Is it called a field or not?
Yeah, that's more, you know, like it's, I see that more as hiking trails. And, you know, use on that, but let me get back to you on that one as it relates to deep. If we could, I think that's something we certainly could, but yeah, let us get back to you. Yeah. And again, this is a property that there's a lot of habitat value. So I think we want to have a lighter footprint on this site, but there's also some good upland that I think we can have some good trails. We want to get people out and out in nature. I think it's really important to get people on the outdoors and actively participating and seeing in the things of the great properties that we have in Groton.
Right. Because I believe it's one hundred and sixty-one acres. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I think a disc golf could only maybe take up a couple acres. I mean, a handful at most. I mean, so it wouldn't have to be spread over the whole, you know, one hundred and sixty-one acres. I mean, that's what I'm looking for, to hopefully find an area that would accommodate something, you know, other people in our community and that have reached out to me and expressed great interest. And that was the other thing was parking. And I heard what you said. So with one hundred and sixty-one acres and trails going through, what are you foreseeing as parking? And would, would they have to be specific like when we did the Kowalski property and we had put certain criteria for parking in?
I think a lot of that, we can negotiate that with deep of how we do the parking. You know, a lot of times you'll see these types of parking lots be gravel lots, not too intensive. And we can set the number of parking spaces there is what, again, negotiating that with deep, but the number of parking spots is also going to almost set how many people are, in a sense, how many people are there? You know, people can always ride a bike there, walk there, ride a horse there, something like that. But that's certainly going to limit some of the foot traffic happening there. And, you know, jumping back to the disc golf, I'm not a disc golf expert. I've gone through a number of the courses before. I think people look to have them either in a small area and it could be combined over a large area and that might add to it. But I think that's something, let us work with deep and negotiate on that. I think that could be a good compatible use out there. You know, for example, Sparkle Lake, when we purchased that property eight to ten-plus years ago, that called for ten spaces. But again, we negotiated that with deep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just very briefly, I had this in my files. Passive recreation refers to recreational activities that do not require prepared facilities. And then examples are hunting, camping, historical and archaeological exploration, yada, yada, yada. So Councillor Aubrey, did you have your hand up?
No.
Councillor Bordelain.
Thank you. Yeah, I've done a lot of reading about this and, you know, the historical value is immense. And I hope that we give some credit to that somewhere on that property down the road. I know that's not in this now, but I think it is important to definitely give some historical value and knowledge and, you know, recognition at that property. When, when and if this was to go forward for the town. Because I think it really does shape the area of, you know, what really happened here and who was here for that time period. So I know right now there's no proposed name or anything. It's just the purchase of the property. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what you mean by a proposed name.
We call it Flunk Point. We have different names for our parks, right? We have we have names of our.
Yeah. Right now, it's just known as the Wolf Brook property, but I think that was the LLC name. We certainly could come up with a name for the property.
Right. I think that would be important. I think that's, I think that'd be huge to the community and, and the lasting effect of, you know, acquiring such a large piece of land that there is definitely, I think the name should be prominent and be fitting to the sixteen thirty-seven of some sort. But that's just one, one thought. But looking at this, if in fact funds aren't raised, we have other plans or is there anything limiting us in this document that we could inquire funds in another manner if we had to?
Well, I, right now, it's in the agreement. It specifies that we have to do fundraising. So how we come up with that, whether it's through grants, whether it's through fundraising, I think, you know, it doesn't limit our avenues of how it can come up, you know, bake sale. It's not limited there.
And then if any of the artifacts were just surface on this property, are we going to have a plan in place or how are we going to, how are we going to be able to? I don't know. How do we?
So generally, on a property like this, you want to keep people away from digging up and taking artifacts away. And my understanding is that the best thing to do is to leave them in place.
Right. I think, I think it can be great for Groton. I think I look forward to seeing where this goes and I look forward to figuring out how we name it, really, to really kind of have it stand out and have something there welcoming and really just making it another part of our landmark in our town. So, thank you.
Councillor Baumgartner.
Yes, quickly, I'd like to applaud the great work done on behalf of the town. You know, John, you shepherded this project through for several years now, since, I believe you brought it, even the concept to us several years ago. And very, very grateful for the state grant. And obviously, you know, very excited to hear that we could be potential, we could potentially receive additional funds that could supplement or, you know, supplement the funds that we would have or, you know, would be expending for this project moving forward. My question is, is, when was the last time the town purchased a property for the purposes of acquiring additional or open space or protecting open space?
The last time that the town purchased open space was the Sparkle Lake property. And I think that was before I started working for the town. I want to say somewhere in that eight to ten years ago range.
So it has been some time since we've acquired a property larger than a hundred acres.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Yeah. And obviously, you know, the ecological value of the site cannot be understated, but, you know.
It is substantial. Yeah.
Absolutely. And obviously, as you mentioned, the, the cultural and historic value of this site. I would ask as, you know, we, you know, assuming we purchased this property, you know, when we consider the naming of the property, that we do consider that the historic nature of the property. I'm not sure where the name Wolf Brook comes from, probably more so the actual LLC or the company name that, you know, that owns the site, but maybe to kind of look back at the history and, you know, recognize the, you know, the significance, as was mentioned, the retreat, you know, of the Pequots and maybe some consultation with, you know, the Mashantucket Pequot tribe about, you know, that site and, you know, again, as we're considering the naming in the future to honor, you know, those who, you know, who, who were stewards of the land long before we were. And so just again, want to thank you, John, and, you know, the rest of the, your staff and very much look forward to supporting this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Any first-time hands before we go to second-time speakers? Councillor Bordelain.
Sorry, I had my hand up and Councillor Baumgartner was saying after I had spoke what I wanted to say. So I second what he says. I was sitting here in my notes saying, you know, inviting the Mashantucket Pequot Nation, even though they're not heavily involved with the artifacts as much right now, but definitely, I think, bringing them in. I think it's important to bring the people that was impacted on that land and its historical nature to make sure we get a name right for that land. And I think asking them, you know, where, where we should go and what significance and how it could be named, I think, would be a really important part of this and, and respect to, to the native, you know, the Mashantucket Pequot Nation that was there and, and give them the due respect. Thank you.
Councillor Franco, for your second time.
Thank you. So we've been told, Mr. Reiner, that we have twenty-one percent open space. That's what we, as a council, have been told. And so by adding in this other one hundred and sixty-one acres, do you have by any chance a calculation of what percentage we will be at? And what the state recommendation was, because I believe the state recommended most communities be at about, I believe, twenty-one or twenty-two percent. Thank you. Press zero to confirm.
Yeah. So I think we have a lot of acres in town. So I think our, we'll probably stay at that same percentage. I could possibly look at running some numbers on that, but I think we'll still probably be at that twenty-one percent. And I do believe that the state standard was also right at that twenty-one percent of where we should be. So we're floating right around in that right spot.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I just would like to speak in support of the acquisition of this property. As Councillor Baumgartner said earlier, you've been talking to us about this property for several years now. And it's, it's good that it's finally coming to fruition and that we will be able to preserve this property, both for the natural qualities and for the historic qualities. And I hope that we can go after some other grants, but I think it's a very good thing that we've partnered with one of our nonprofits who is willing to come in because they see the value in this as well. And I understand there's another nonprofit that's also interested in helping to fundraise. So we're looking at a lot of support in the community for this, and I think that bodes well. I think that's a very good sign. And thank you very much for pursuing this and we appreciate you going after other grants as well.
And one other group that I should not forget to mention is in any time we go to buy property, sometimes we often forget about the sellers. The property owners here have been absolutely fantastic. This has taken some time. They've been very patient and just very open and willing to work with us. And I do really want to thank them for their participation in this. They've, they've been just absolutely stellar to deal with. As well as, you know, thank you to the council, the staff in the office has done a great job doing the heavy lifting on applying for the grant. And just working with some of these other community organizations is, it's been great to see how many people have come together to try to make this happen. I've actually had to kind of say, all right, folks, hold on a second. We're not there yet. I know we want to get the word out, but there's a lot of excitement about the protection of this property. It's, it's very exciting to see. So a lot of good, hard work on a lot of people's part going around.
Agreed. All right, council, we will vote on 2021 141 land acquisition. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. Counselors, we are done with all of our new business and it is ten twenty. So before we proceed with anything else, I have to make you aware that it is ten twenty. All right, we have one other item. Other business. Is there other business to come before the council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, two other, other businesses. I don't know whose hand went up first. So I see Councillor Franco and Councillor Bordelain both. Do you know who? I can't hear you.
I just wanted to remind Leanne, she wanted to bring something forward on your other business.
Councillor Franco, did you have something you wanted to talk about?
No.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelain?
Thank you. I just wanted to check on the status at the last meeting I had asked about the community meals at the senior center. To town manager.
I don't have it on me, but I had sent an update to the council on Friday. If you look at my town manager's report.
Yeah, I have that. But is there anything else new to develop with that, that the community, that's like, to me, it's not to the community?
Yeah, nothing at this point.
So at this time, we still, no community meals are happening at the senior center?
Right. They're at, I believe, Claude Chester.
All right. And what's our reason for not renewing that?
Again, I don't have my notes on me. I'd want to look at them. I detailed them in my manager's report.
Okay.
Plus, plus, I defer, I, you know, I'm not going to force something on a department either if it interferes with their operations, but like I said, I had referred her to talk with Mark. I haven't heard if they have yet. So we'll see what their discussions come up with.
Okay. If you could just keep this in loop under your, your manager's report publicly, that'd be great. Thank you.
I will.
Councillor Aubrey, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to know if I have two other counselors' support to put in a request for a review of the action on the letter I wrote, I read tonight.
So as I, as I said to Councillor Bordelain earlier, I was requesting, requesting that it be put in writing and the exact language that you would like in the referral. As I said to Councillor Bordelain earlier, and she is, she's already sent hers, as I understand. So I need exact language and I needed to go to all the counselors. And then at that point, And then at that point, then the counselors can reply whether they wish to pursue whatever your referral is. I would caution, though, that the last time we discussed this issue, the council sent it to committee. And we asked, we asked committee to take care of things, but if committee now wants to come back to committee of the whole, again, let's, let's get written confirmation from counselors on that. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And counselors, then please look for two requests for referrals, one from Counselor Bordelon and one from Counselor Aubrey. And please reply with your support so that manager and I are aware of the support.
I will just state the fact that I'm, I, never mind. I'll send something, but you can send something back to a committee, but if the committee won't meet, you can't do anything about it. So you come back to the council and that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you. All right.
May I talk? Never. I would say I would like to talk about that subject, Madam Mayor, if that's possible.
You wish.
It's on the floor, so it's as other business. As I've received emails regarding a meeting with only two of the counselors, myself and the person that sent me the email, without the third person being on the email, if we're going to have meetings, it suggests meetings. I feel we should follow the rules correctly that the committee members are emailed all at the same time. Number two, I do not see where it says complaints. We're taking in civilian complaints. That's not within our rules. Are we going to review our rules to talk about civilian complaints? And how we handling this if we are taking, supposed to look at this about each other? I was under the assumption, as long as we provided the information, said the information, I believe Counselor Aubrey brought that forth on May 11th, which I could not attend due to a medical condition, that it was handled at that meeting. So now we're bringing this subject up again as a civilian complaint, which is not within our rules. So we may want to be very careful how we do this. Thank you.
May I make a statement?
Counselors, you, you have heard the request for the referral and you've heard a response from another committee member on that particular item. And I would ask you to please consider both as you are deciding whether to support the referral or not. All right.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a statement if I might.
Yes, but we're not going to get into huge discussion on this because it is not on the agenda, but Counselor Aubrey, go ahead.
I, as a courtesy, attempted to work with Counselor Parker's schedule. I sent five emails asking her for particular dates. Would this work? I got no. Would this work? I got no. Would this work? No. You know, you suggest a date. If you can't work with that date, you suggest another date. So then I finally decided that wasn't going to work, so I put out a notice for our meeting to everybody that was part of our committee and I got no. So I canceled the meeting. You can't have a meeting if you have nobody coming. So I'm sorry. I emailed and said, if I've done something that's upset you, I'm very sorry. Tell me what it is. I'll try to correct it. I got nothing. So at this point, I resign from the committee once this is taken care of. I'm done. I've obviously lost the respect of the people that I'm trying to work with, so there's no point in me continuing on. Thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you, Counselor Aubrey. All right. So council, we have a lot on our plate with that particular issue, so please consider carefully and weigh, weigh your decisions carefully moving forward.
Point of clarification, Madam Mayor?
I have the floor. I would ask all the counselors to please treat each other as valuable members of this body and do your part to make it function as best we can. Counselor Bordelon, did you have a question?
I just, point of clarification, how do we move forward with anything for the rules if the chair is no longer?
I said when I had completed this situation.
She did say she was.
I wanted to make sure I heard, because my computer's kind of choppy, so. So I wanted to make sure I heard.
A member resigns from a committee, as has happened in the past, I can appoint a new member to the committee. So we will cross that bridge when we come to it, but we thank all the members of the committee for their service at this time.
I was just clarifying because my computer had cut out and I just heard.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move, Baumgartner.
Motion to adjourn by Baumgartner? I didn't catch the second, please.
Franco, second.
Franco, thank you. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Good night, precious. Good night, John boy.
Any abstentions? So moved unanimously, we're adjourned at 10:29 PM. Thank you, everybody. Be well and have a good night.